I would like to call to order the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners work session of August 1st, 2022. Welcome, everyone. First item up is approval of the work session agenda, and you all have a copy of that before you. Do I hear a motion to approve the work session agenda, including the changes on page three? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes, and we move to discussion items. First up is Library and Active Living Center at Mount Pleasant, interior and exterior palette discussion, and we are welcome Kyle Billiford to the table.
If you can bring up the images. So as we move forward, we've been meeting with the customer and obviously the design team going through and again. That kind of shows you your schematic layout of the building itself, with also a component of the park and the parking lots around it, if you can scroll down. Okay, great. So, yeah, so kind of give you some interior shots. Actually, if you can scroll up one more, because you, yeah, there you go. That kind of shows you, and on your computers, probably a lot more clear, where it shows a breakdown of the different spaces, both shared and then obviously for Active Living Center and then for the libraries. And then I guess these are some renderings, and we'll just wait for the computer to catch up as we get to the color palettes. So the exercise was to go through with the customer and the design team and county management, and start to look at both the exterior palettes and the interior palettes. The exterior palettes, obviously, your brickwork, your Parklex, those type of materials, your glass, and see how that all kind of goes together with the roof. Sit. Okay. So those show you some renderings of the exterior of the building, showing you the spine that goes through the building to bring in the different sunlight. So the spine would be the tall portion of the roof that kind of segregates the building, allowing the clear story to bring in a lot of daylight into the, into the actual interior rooms as well as the exterior rooms. So as we started to go through the color palettes, we're trying to find something that doesn't look out of place in that area, but there's not much to pull from in that area other than the red brick that you've seen in some of the downtown mills, and that's some, some of that is being renovated now. So we kind of went in some different directions with the exterior palette. Could you scroll down? Keep going, please. Couple more. That's the interior. Thanks. So we came up with a couple of options for the exterior palette, and again, as we've done, starting with the courthouse, where we've gone through exterior and interior palettes with the board, I'm just looking for some input if we're heading in the right direction. Ultimately, in all of the projects previous to this one, the courthouse, EMS headquarters, the ITS building, staff has made the decisions on the interior palettes and the exterior, but with guidance from the board to make sure that we're headed in the right direction. So that's what these different palettes are supposed to show, and really, the biggest difference is, is kind of using an aged brick versus more of a modern gray brick. And I did bring some samples. I'm not really sure if they do any more justice than the digital images that you've looked at, but to give you an idea of the different types of materials we're looking to utilize. And these are the same type of wood paneling that you would see used in the courthouse as well as the EMS headquarters. I'm not going to tell you they'll be the exact same manufacturer, because we're already having issues with getting that onsite at the EMS headquarters. Thankfully, we do have the bulk of that at the courthouse site already, but it is along the same lines of that type of material, to kind of give it an earthy and a nature tone to it versus just all brick or precast concrete. Well, the gray, the other one is, yes, no, the aged one, yes, is a tumbled brick. Yeah. And then obviously with our glass, our glass selections, we're not looking at getting anything too crazy. Obviously, you can get blue and all sorts of tinted glass. We were looking at something along probably gray and in clear in some cases, and bronze in the other. I just want to make sure for the board that, that the tones of the building are along the lines of what you would be looking for in that area. Again, it is part of a park complex, and it is a standalone facility, whereas we're not having to plop it in the middle of a bunch of other buildings like we did with the courthouse. So I'll just kind of be looking for some direction if you want me to stay with these type of tones, or if there's a specific direction you want us to take a turn in. Thank you so much. Okay. Any, anybody have any aversion to anything shown in that, whether we end up with gray brick or tumbled brick, or I mean, does anybody have a preference, or just kind of want us to piece it all together so it looks the best possible?
I'm partial to the tumbled. It's, I think over time would look, it would last longer and look less institutional over a long period of time.
Okay. Okay.
I agree as well.
I agree, but I just have a question. How is, what's the, like, availability of each product?
I wouldn't be able to tell you.
Okay, I didn't know if you knew.
We'd be so far away from, from construction, it'd probably change by then anyways.
Got it, okay.
And I'm okay with it also, Kyle.
Sure.
Exterior, interior, no problem. You know, we've always done, I think, fairly well, you know, in the past. One concern that I did have, and I don't know whether you have addressed that in this new schematic or not, was the parking. You know, we had the practice fields. Has that been incorporated into more parking?
Yeah, and they're still trying to squeeze more parking into the actual park component of it. Not so much around the actual building, but down towards the park.
Right, exactly. That's great.
That's correct. We've tried to shave some more of the, the green space and add some more in, to be able to also squeeze that west restroom in there down there.
Right, that's good. That's good. Thank you.
Okay, so my deliverable takeaway from this is, is the preference would be kind of the tumbled or weathered look brick. Okay? If you could scroll back up so we go through the interior selections? So there was about six or seven interior color palettes brought in, and staff went through all of them and kind of, we, they limited it down to, or got it down to two. And really, it's a, a green and a chartreuse. So two different types of, I guess, hue lines that would go through the, through the whole building. And again, I don't think we're looking for a specific vote from the board on exactly which one. Just wanted to make sure that both are acceptable. Chartreuse would kind of be something like a, a safety green, if you will. I had to look it up several times just to pronounce it correctly. But does have, it is coming out in a lot of buildings, and the hue lines that go through the different carpets and the floors are very impressive. They could tie it in. Again, these were staff selections in terms of chartreuse or green. And this would go through on everything. So your wall coverings, all your different types of resilient floorings, all your type of cushioned and carpet floorings, and so on and throughout, is those different trends of colors.
I think they both look good. I think the, for some reason, the green seems to be a more calming look to me. That's just my personal opinion, although it's a lot brighter on that screen than it is on this screen.
Kyle, on the, this particular slide, that green, like, line across that, what kind of product is that? Is it?
LVT. You're talking on the bottom?
Yeah.
It's an LVT plank.
Okay, okay. So as opposed to carpet?
Uh, yes, so like a luxury vinyl tile. So when you go in old buildings and you see the vinyl tile squares, these are actually planks. They seem a lot in break rooms now, and they can be made to look like wood or anything else.
Okay, because I noticed on the chartreuse, we don't have much of that.
Correct.
We have two different shades there.
Correct. The chartreuse, we would end up with some LVT. I don't, I just don't think it would be completely chartreuse when it goes through. It'd be a little too safety yellow.
Between, just for my curiosity, between the carpeting and the LVT, what's the durability on those?
Uh, well, the, depends on what type of carpet. You'll end up with three different carpets throughout the, the entire facility. You have walk-off carpet, you have more of a plush carpet, and then you obviously have your regular carpet tile squares. So LVT lasts in your, your high-traffic areas, where you entry and break rooms and things like that. Acoustics is probably more of a driver. I mean, I'm not sure what you're, if you're asking me what lasts longer, yes, LVT probably holds its finish laster, longer, but I don't think it offers you the acoustics that you want in that building.
The acoustics, because it just seems like we have a lot of the LVT flooring in, it would just echo a lot.
Okay, meaning we have it in current locations or in this one? We haven't worked through the design to have any, any of the designs of where the flooring will be yet. Yeah, so I would imagine through your spine hallways, you would have the LVT, and then in your break rooms, and then I think probably in one of Londa's multipurpose rooms, we've debated several different types of floorings based on what we've done at the Concord Senior Center, and LVT seems to be the best there. And we're going to have to try to add some additional acoustic. But in the library, I would think that you would probably see 90% of that carpet square go in. And then at your entryways, we would try to use a walk-off carpet, which looks much better than it used to back in the day, but it's, uh, has a different feel to it, like it actually scuffs your shoes off for you as you come in. I can pass out chartreuse if you'd like to see it.
Yeah, I would say for Londa's group, probably dancing surfaces would be the most important thing.
Hence the LVT. Yes, yep. I think it's probably the green is what you're looking at right there. So some of those paint samples that are up there, those paint cards. Okay. I'll tell the designer there's a, a lean towards chartreuse then.
Well, tell us, tell us.
Light link, because we are not coloring.
Okay, okay. I will let them know. And as we start to get farther in through the design, and actually can take all of that information and render it in, we'll be back up with further updates to kind of bring those, those renderings to you, I'll let you see them a little bit more.
And you feel good about the, the combination of materials, like putting these together?
Before anything is even put out to bid, I will, yes.
Well, I'm in, generally speaking, with what you know about buildings and maintenance, is the direction that we're headed, are we in, are we headed in a good direction?
Yes, I have more concerns about the HVAC systems that we're looking at, as well as the height of the spine roof compared to the rest of the, the facility, and transversing from one level to the other level, also while cleaning it and taking care of it. So I have some concerns, not so much about the materials, but probably more about the elevations.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions or comments on this item? Thank you, sir.
Thank you all very much.
Okay, we move to item 3.2 from Cooperative Extension. We're happy to have Tracy Lacomp to talk about Expanded Food and Nutrition Education Program. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. It's good to be back. I am here today to talk about one of our vacant positions and an opportunity that we have with our partnership with North Carolina Cooperative Extension. The Expanded Food and Nutrition Education Program is a grant-funded position through the USDA, and so that money trickles down through NC State through Cooperative Extension to us here in the county. Originally, or historically, we have hosted that position as a .75 full-time employee for a 30-hour position, and that in the past has been a 50% county pay, 50% NC State-paid position. And when we were reassessing this position, we looked at reassessing and trying to figure out where the needs are best with an Expanded Food and Nutrition Education Program. It is a grant-funded position, like I said, that is very specific on the, the program that is delivered, and it is traditionally targeting our limited resource population. And for us here in Cabarrus County, one of the needs that we have is focusing on our Spanish-speaking population, our Latinx population, and trying to meet the needs of that community within our, within this Expanded Food and Nutrition. So it is, traditionally, we had a FNET position that was focused completely on youth, so ages five to 18, and focusing on that demographic. We've partnered with the Boys and Girls Club and a lot of different partners throughout the community to reach the youth in that program. And when we started assessing where we could really meet the needs and where the needs are, we looked at, within the Latinx community, to be actually in the need for both youth and adult. So we would like to increase that to a full-time position. We're in the conversations of that, and while in the conversations of that, the state has agreed to foot the bill to make that a full-time position, keeping our county funds at the same level that they, that they are currently, in hopes that we would build that program, and then I would be able to come to you in a future budget situation and ask for that to go back to the 50%. And so what, what we'd like to move forward with now is moving this to a full-time position, where more of that position is going to be covered by the state. So the state would cover 63% of that position, and the county would maintain the, what would, will be a 37% of that fund. So not asking for any more money, and would really just wanted to keep you abreast of how we were going to move forward with this position. I don't really want to turn down money. So if they're going to help support this program, and we want to make it a full-time position that will serve both youth and adults, we are already talking with some of our local partners, and Shady Brook Elementary and the Kannapolis School System has built a teaching kitchen in their classrooms. So we're working with them to partner with them for some different opportunities to be able to reach a different demographic than what we have been reaching traditionally with this program. So I'm here to answer any questions that you might have, or take any feedback, before we hope to post this position within the next couple of weeks. The FNET program generally does its hiring and training where they would start October 1.
Tracy, this position's been open for a year?
So we, there, the lady who was in this position left in September of last year, 2021, which was prior to me coming into this position.
Right.
We had four vacancies in our program that we have been working through, filling those vacancies, including the one that I vacated to become this position. So we're working through the different levels of just getting everything figured out. And because the FNET position really likes to start with their training, because of the grant cycle, they do training twice a year, so they like to start in March or October. So we've kind of pushed it through to, to have an October start date for our goal.
When the state extension grants funds like that, and then the person that those funds were intended to go leaves, such as in this case, what happens to those funds? Do they go back to the state? Do they stay in the county coffers? Or the, where, where does that fund go?
So the general fund through NC State has all of our personnel funds in that. And then the NC State invoices the county every month for our paychecks.
Right.
So it just stays within the, the general thing. We don't, and NC State has not invoiced Cabarrus County since September of 2021.
So it's one of those deals where that, it's not like you use it or you lose it?
Correct, yeah. No, it's still built into our budget, and it's still there for, and we did budget within our county budget as well for this position. So it's, it's within that budget on both ends for NC State and for.
Okay, and my last question is, have you got a prospect to fill this position?
We do have interest in the position. As you know, there's lots of different things within the educational world that are changing regularly. I come from the education field, so we still have a lot of connections within that. And we've had conversations with lots of different people of having opportunities to fill this position.
That's all I have. Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you.
Other questions for Tracy?
So the, the 37% for the county for FY23, does that mean FY24, we're at 100%? Or with, do we know, will the grant continue? Sounds like they typically have done it, but are we on the hook for the full-time position at a future date?
So as with everything with us, it's budget by budget. So it's one of those, if as we go into FY24, and as we bring it to you all and work our way through this, the county budget process, if it doesn't get approved at the county budget process, then we'll go to the state. And if it doesn't get approved there, then we'll have to, you know, figure out that as it comes.
Okay.
But that's, yes. So it's not part of our MOU with the county and the state. It's not written in there. We are going through that process to make sure that all of our ducks are in a row, so no one's on the hook, or, you know, that, that requirement is written somewhere, so we understand, and it's all in writing and understanding all of that. But as of right now, the state has, or that the state FNET program has said that they would take care of it for FY23, and then we would revisit it for FY24, and we can revisit for FY25 if needed. So we can keep, keep revisiting as needed.
I think it's an excellent opportunity, and for, for the state to step up and increase their support of it. And that certainly is a springboard that we may be able to use for hu, future years, but this ties in perfectly with a lot of other efforts in the county. The Children Win Task Force on Childhood Obesity that a number of us have been involved in for several years, and a lot of the food and nutrition efforts through the Health Alliance, as well as what's going on at the Research Campus in Kannapolis. So I think this all links up extremely well together.
Yeah, we've been in talks with a lot of different areas in the Plans for Human Health Institute at the Research Campus in Kannapolis, and working with the Health Alliance, and because we're focusing in Kannapolis, utilizing all those resources that are up there, working with our Farm and Food Council to help promote local, local foods and eating fresh, and how to prepare fresh foods, and, and those kind of things, focusing on being able to utilize what's here in our community and build those partnerships. There's a couple of different additional programs through NC State. The HUNTOE program, which is a family and nutrition education program that will also link nicely with the Leadership Institute, and, and bringing more of our youth that are raised here in Cabarrus County to stay here in Cabarrus County and promote agriculture and all the things that we do as well. So we're really excited about the opportunity to move forward with the program, and happy to answer any questions along the way as you guys think of other things, and we'll continue that conversation.
Excellent. Anything else? All righty, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we move now to item 3.3 from Human Services, Transit Consolidation Implementation Study. And we're happy to have Anthony and Bob and crew to talk about that item. Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you, commissioners, for allowing us to come and speak with you today about the consolidation implementation plan or study that's getting ready to go, or that's going on right now. As y'all may recall, a few years ago, the, the county, Cabarrus County Transportation, the CK Rider, conducted a long-range transportation study that covered pretty much everything between the two agencies, short-term, long-term, all, even discussing light rail and those type of things. Part of that study was, was a consideration of whether the two, CK Rider and Cabarrus County Transportation should consolidate. The recommendation out of that study that was that consolidation should be looked at and moved forward. What we have done now is just started another study, but it's an implement, a study to, to basically develop the implementation plan for, for consolidation between the two, the two agencies. So this is just, it is just basically started last month, so we just wanted to come and give you just a brief summary of kind of what the timeline is and what they're looking at, and kind of where we'll go from there. Okay. And the, the study is being financed through the, the NPO, and contracted through the city of Concord. But Concord, Kannapolis, and the county are all involved in the study. But we contracted with a firm called Benesh, that, that's a transit planning firm, and they have a couple of other firms that they're working with that will, will assist as well to develop the plan. And like I said, the goal is to determine, is to, to look at kind of where the, both agencies are right now, and make recommendations on, on how to proceed going forward for consolidation. And they'll, they'll kind of outline those steps and what the costs are, and those type of things moving forward to, to do that, to move toward consolidation. There are six main tasks they're looking at, and I just go, go and go through those briefly as we go through. The first task is, is Project Initiation Administration, and the kickoff meeting between, for, it was July 13th, and so that was just where the, where Benesh came. They went over the, the project plan and outlined basically these six steps, and who would be, kind of introductions, and who would be responsible, and those type of things. And then they'll be having bi-weekly meetings with the project manager, which is through the city of Concord, and then the project team will meet regularly to, to go over the study as we go. The second task is actually starting now, is going on, is agency overviews. As part of that kickoff meeting, there was a list of documents and items that we received that, that we're in the process of sending them, you know, financial information, you know, routes, vehicles, staffing, all those type of information for that we've been sending. And they will be here, their, their team will be here starting tomorrow for this week, doing interviews with staff, with CK Rider staff and their staff, doing interviews with all the staff this week, and then some other key stakeholders with, with the county and, and both cities, as far as talking with the mayors and Commissioner Morris and, and county and city management. And so that's going on this week, and at the same time, they're looking, like I said, looking at our, our staffing levels, kind of what we're doing now, day-to-day, and that, that's why they're doing the interviews. You know, we're, we're sending job descriptions, but then they're talking with the individuals to find out really, really what they do day-to-day, and, and looking at, at our staff and Rider staff and those type of things. And they'll do us an assessment of, of both systems of where we're at right now. After that, they'll look at, continue to look at our, our operations, how we do our operations, our finances, how we're funded, those type of things, look at our facilities. You know, right now, transportation is at the DHS building. CK Rider is down at the transit hub. And what, they'll look at the space now, and what kind of space is available, what space would be needed short-term, and what type, what type of space would be needed long-term, if there's a consolidation, because neither one of those spaces are large enough to consolidate and keep them there. So there'd be a long-term potential for, for another building at some point, if there's consolidation. They'll also look at, like I said, the operating financial profile, you know, how we're, like I said, both are funded through the grants, how we're funded through the county, how all that, you know, and analyze our performance and how we're doing. And they'll do a SWOT analysis, looking at our strengths and weaknesses for both agencies, and then any opportunities we have, any threats, external threats that we have, and develop that. The next task is, is one of the more important ones, basically what they'll develop is, once they have all this information, is they'll develop up to three different options for how the, the new agency, if approved, will be governed. And that could be either under one of the municipal agencies or the county, or a, potentially a separate.
Authority.
Authority. Thank you, Bob. That's what Bob's here for. When, when my mind goes, he knows what I'm going to say. For a separate authority. And what they'll do at that point is develop the, the options, lay out the benefits for each option, the, the, the pros and cons, the good, the bad, the finances, how much it would cost. If there's any positions that are, or if there's, you know, there's potential that more positions would be needed depending on the model. depending on the model. And then at that point, probably in November is what we're looking at now, or what they're looking at, is that we, we would schedule a meeting between, it'd be this, this group, as well as Kannapolis and Concord's, uh, city councils and management. And they would, uh, they would present all the options and, and then get your input on which option to go with. And then once that's done and they have a, an idea of which way we want to go, then they would develop the plan based on that option, uh, looking at, uh, at, at how that structure would look, what the, uh, the organizational chart should look like, uh, how, how finances would look, basically all the goals there. And then they would do an implementation plan that shows how to get from where we are now to that. Uh, and then the last task, of course, is just the final documents. They would prepare that doc, prepare the documents, prepare the, the final report. And then there'll be one more presentation where they will present to y'all, give the final, the final, um, presentation on the study of, of how to, uh, consolidation would take place if it was approved. And again, just real quick, like I said, we kicked off in July, uh, and, and the interviews are going on this week. And right now, like I said, right now, they're looking at probably doing the, the option selection in November, and then the final plan presentation in February of twenty twenty-three. So about a seven or eight month study. That's just a, a really quick rundown there if anyone has any questions.
Anthony, I had heard about this six months ago. Constituent, yeah, constituent called me and asked me, had I heard about it? And I said, well, no, I haven't. So anyway, I talked with a couple of, uh, staff, and I know it's been an ongoing discussion for some time. Well, as for myself, you know, we're in the implementation design stage, you might say.
Yes, sir.
And I, I would want you to know upfront, two of the things that would concern me would be, number one, what the adverse effects would be on our citizens, what the adverse effect for them.
Okay.
And then, um, the cost to the county, is it going to save us money? Are we going to, uh, be at a break even? Because it doesn't really matter to me if they ride this bus or that bus or whatever. But what concerns me though is how does it negatively affect our citizens? And then how much more or less is it going to cost us? And that's where my real concerns are.
Yes, sir.
The other stuff is just nuts and bolts.
Yes, sir. And, and the discussion that we've had and had a number of times, and we've had it through the couple of meetings we've had with the, the group, is that as far as it should, as far as the effect to citizens, they shouldn't see any difference, or they should see enhanced services. It, it's not, it, it shouldn't be anything, any cut to any services or any detriment. It should be, like I said, either the same or enhancing the service.
I agree, you know, and this person that called me was concerned that it would be adverse effect.
I understood.
And obviously I couldn't give an answer because I, we haven't discussed it until now. So I, I hope that you guys will look at all those, those two options.
Definitely, sir. Yes, sir.
Yeah, the, the plan is to actually make it better for the citizens. There are a lot of times where they have smaller buses like ours that they do their ADA transportation with. And there's a lot of times where we have a bus on the same road that they have a bus on, picking up two different people that could be picked up by one. So that would make more availability for the rest of the county.
That's what I started to say. The, the entire purpose of, of beginning the study at all was to see, you know, how can we provide better service and expanded service, uh, and save the taxpayers' money? Uh, and the funding formula for both of these entities is way, uh, beyond my level of comprehension with the number of federal grant programs and Medicaid transportation and ADA transportation. And Bob, the, how long is the list?
It's, it's very long. And this would actually, uh, if, if we combine services, it opens up more opportunity for funding, uh, through the federal government being one service. Right now, we're having split money with us, CK Rider, Rowan County. Well, we're getting one pot, that's a larger pot of money that, that we can use to expand service routes, not only for us, but for the city bus system and whatnot. So.
And, and correct me if I'm wrong, but, but I think this may make it a little bit easier for us to, um, interact with some of our neighboring communities like Charlotte Mecklenburg. If, if we have an opportunity to link those services as well, doesn't this make that a little less complicated?
Yeah. And, you know, one of the things we talked about is a common, uh, uh, computer system so that each can see what others are doing. And, you know, not to simplify it, but I say you have a trip over here and I'm going to be over there. I'll get that trip for you. You get this trip. I mean, it just opens up all kinds of opportunity for efficiency, which again will make it better for the citizens using the services.
And, and also, a final decision has not been made on this. I think that's the purpose of this study is to provide the details and the information to allow this board, as well as the other participating boards, to then make a decision. So, you know, there's a, a lot of hoops to jump through before we get to that point.
Yeah. And that, that's when we get to the February, you know, like I said, around the February is when we're coming back and seeing the final plan. And then that's when we would ask for either approval or, or how you, how you'd want us to, uh, continue.
Yeah. Other questions?
Just a quick comment. Um, consolidation typically always starts off, you know, that's, hey, this is the way we ought to go. And it always sounds like it's going to be better. And sometimes it doesn't work out that way. But I think what you guys are doing is exactly what you ought to do, which is take specific progressive steps to get from here to there and make decisions along the way, uh, bef, you know, if you get sideways somewhere along the way, you feel, you, you realize, hey, this is not going to be beneficial to taxpayer. Well, then that changes everything.
Sure.
So, you know, sometimes this is, these kinds of things are just thrown together and said, hey, if it's one entity instead of two, it's going to be better. And then you just run off and do it regardless. And I'm glad to know that that's not what we're doing and we're doing it the right way.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Well, thank you very much. We look forward to hearing updates along the way.
All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you. We move now to item three point four. Uh, we welcome Kyle Billifor back to the table to talk about courthouse expansion project update. And we welcome Jason Harris to join in.
Jason Harris, project executive with Messer for the Project Across the Street, uh, courthouse expansion. Wanted to bring, um, Jason up to kind of elaborate as I start to get in and to go through some of the pictures and show the updates of the building, but also to discuss, uh, the impact of the schedule. So the last time I was in front of the board, um, I did elaborate that we were going to have to be pushing out the schedule originally. We had looked to open to the public in January of twenty twenty-three. We're now looking at an opening to the public in May of twenty twenty-three. So having an opening, a ribbon-cutting ceremony in early April, and then closing the building back up, and then going through all of the staff training and move management that you have to go to, and opening for business operations, uh, in the middle or third week of May. Some of that is, is up to courthouse staff. Um, so we've identified a pretty large chunk of schedule where, um, after Messer is able to turn over portions of the building to us, we would obviously start to handle all the FFNE installs. So all the furniture for all the courtrooms, all the offices. And then you obviously have a significant amount of what I will call move management, of what parts of your current operation can you move over to the new building, but still operate out of the current building? So what can you live with and without? And then obviously, at what points can you just move everything over and start the operations in the new building? And, uh, to do that, it, it takes a significant amount of county staff. So Todd Shanley, myself, and Matthew Tardugno are working with the courthouse staff. We've begun, uh, monthly meetings with the staff, the executive leadership staff that's over there. And in fact, on top of that, uh, both Mr. Shanley and I are doing individual meetings with all the different groups that are over there to figure out just how we're going to move them in, and move them in and operate, and then cease functions in the nineteen seventy-five building. On top of that, you have all of the training that has to be done, and all the audio visual, all the mechanical, all the elevators and everything with all the county staff that operate the building. Um, and, and then you also have to orient all your users. So all the folks that work in the nineteen seventy-five building and all the folks that come to the court every day to do business, even though they don't want to have offices there, you have to orient them to a building that's larger than three times the size they're moving in. We couldn't figure out a way to do it in one weekend, so we're going to have to push it out a little bit. So, um, that's going to take a, a significant amount of just move management, understanding and figuring that all out and working with all those entities to figure out how to do that. And in the background of all that, we'll be having all of those millions dollars of furniture being installed in there and put in there as we're kind of going through that process. Mind you, we won't be able to inhabit the building, but we'll be going through all those processes. Um, so I, I kind of wanted to allow, um, Mr. Harris the time to kind of elaborate on what's been going on with our schedule up to this point and kind of what the pain points for us in terms of materials and the work being done over there. As Lauren, if possible, if it works, able to, I can scroll through the pictures. Okay. Okay. Well, I'm sure I'll break it this time. Um, so a- as I, I'll let, um, Mr. Harris kind of elaborate and go through that, and then I can provide some updates at the, at the end of the presentation.
Sure. So the only thing I would add before we move into that is I, I spent some time today looking at our original bid schedule for the job versus the schedule we're working off of now. And I would say we probably were pretty uninformed about just how much work, what Kyle just said was really going to take. Um, as we've sat down with those user groups now here over the last couple of months to understand what that looks like, it's a big undertaking to move all of those folks and get them in, get them oriented, get them trained. And our current schedule reflects that. And, and the time duration that we have built into our current schedule versus then is about two hundred fifty percent of what it was for that activity as a result of those conversations. So, um, that's certainly some light to shed on, on what Kyle just talked about. In terms of what's been going on in the building, we've obviously been very busy over there. And there are a few, um, points that, things that have made our job kind of challenging for the team over there. First would be material delays. Kyle's talked about that about, um, three times already, I think, up here. Um, and then fire stopping challenges, which I'll talk in a little bit more detail. And then the FFNE and move-in stuff we just talked about. So I'm, I'll walk you through the pictures that we've got here. I've got some notes on each of these, and, and we'll touch on that. Feel free to stop me as we go. So the first one is a picture of the facade of the building, as well as some site work going on on the bottom. What I want to point out on that facade picture is, if you've noticed, there are windows in all the openings. There's Parklex panels on all the locations where they're supposed to be. There's a full roof on the building. We're fully enclosed. What we're lacking is concrete panels. Those, the remainder of those panels aren't going to show up until the end of September. That's a full six months behind when they were scheduled to be here. Um, as we look towards phase three and our planning that work, we have a year in our schedule for lead times on those. So, you know, that's just one example of something that's caused us significant delay. And, and in a way, we've tried to work through how we manage that work. So resequenced the low work to go first. The pan, the wood panels were scheduled to go last. Now they've gone ahead. We've been putting sunshades up everywhere we can. But there's only, there's a limit to how much time you can make up when a, a significant portion of our facade, about thirty percent of it's still not here. So that's an example of, of one of a multitude of conditions we have like that. Let me go to the next one. Same kind of picture. The top is more of where we're lacking concrete panels. Um, that's a little bit older picture because some wood panels in that are now installed. Um, and then at the bottom is just some curtain wall we've been putting in. That was the last piece of curtain wall to go in at the canopy. And really figuring out how that needs to go in, where the concrete panels aren't there was our struggle. This is just a progress picture on the interior. This is the fourth floor. We have, uh, casework crews up installing. This is plastic laminate casework. And here in the last two weeks, we've started the stain grade mill work. So we're making good progress on that front, but you can see there's unfinished product around there, right? And, and you would like to see a little bit more finished scale as you're starting to put in this work. But again, you know, we've got to work with what we've got. And so we're moving forward with work in a somewhat, uh, out-of-sequence fashion. Uh, this is on the first floor in one of the public spaces outside one of the clerks' areas. You can see we're grinding terrazzo floor in an area. We have no ceiling. Uh, this is a result of failed fire stopping inspections. We're struggling to complete wall assemblies. And as a result, we're moving forward with other work. Um, the big picture of this is, uh, the code actually changed in North Carolina four years ago. Uh, in two thousand eighteen, the North Carolina Building Code said that you now require special inspections for all fire stopping. Historically speaking, that's been a pretty basic inspection. So an inspector comes through, they see red, a consistent product installed, everything seems to be in order, we move on. The scale to which we're inspecting these assemblies is, um, ten times different than what it was. So for now, every wall assembly you inspect has to have a label, has to have an approved EJ or meet a UL wall assembly, and every penetration has to be the same way.
Can you elaborate on what an EJ is?
Yeah, an engineering judgment. So there are a, a whole host of standard conditions that, um, the UL, uh, assemblies apply to. And if your wall meets one of those standard conditions, you do the installation, your inspector comes and inspects it accordingly. And if everything's in order, you pass and you move on. Okay? Where it doesn't match exactly one of those now, because of this requirement, we have to get an engineering judgment, which says that a professional engineer reviews our specific condition, stamps a document that says that it's in order and, and meets the intent of that UL, and we're then able to do an inspection. We've probably done seventy-five of those. It's an incredible amount of work for our team, for our sub, and for the special inspector that the county has hired to implement and inspect all of this work. The other requirement that got added as a result of special inspections is you have to destructively test these assemblies. So everywhere you have a different one, you have to go cut out five percent of it to validate that it meets the intent and then reinstall it. So it's something new to North Carolina, and it's, and I'll be honest and say it's new to our sub. It's new to us. It's new to the special inspector. And the market is reacting to that requirement, but it's just now reacting, right? So the level at which you have to apply this work is way up here, and we're usually here. So a lot of what you're going to see is pictures where we're working around these conditions, because it's not like, uh, we find a condition and in two days we can get an EJ. It's, we have to have somebody sketch it up in detail with pictures to explain the scenario, send it to, in this case, Hilti, um, to go review that. They put a drawing together, they stamp it, they send it back, our special inspector reviews it. It's not simple. It, it takes some time. And that's really put a hurting on the interior level of finishes we have. So go to the next one. Let's see what else we've got here. So the next three or four slides are going to reflect that. You can see at the bottom of that picture, the red spray that's on, uh, it's actually a slab transition where the slab on the first floor transitions from the existing elevation of the nineteen seventy-five courthouse to the elevation of the new courthouse. And, and that condition is not a standard condition. So it required a, uh, EJ and then a multitude of inspections to get through that. So, um, that's one example of a spot that we've obviously worked around. Um, this is a chill water riser that's in the building. We have this condition on every floor from the penthouse down to the basement. Um, again, non-typical installation, so we've left surrounding conditions out. That's now past inspections, closed up, uh, but just kind of reflective of what we've talked about. You can't see it in this picture, but where this wall assembly terminates, uh, where you have metal products that are non-typical metal. So if it's not a standard I-beam, if it's a piece of angle that's used as a kicker, that's not on any UL, that's an EJ. So there's a condition where we've run into that. Uh, we have eight elevators. We've run into that at almost every single elevator.
It would be important to note that it's, it's not the design of our building that has all these non-standard. This would be any building that you would have to be going through all these EJs for.
Yeah. Similar condition, top of wall, as well as where the two walls intersect. Uh, we have some penetrating material that doesn't match the standard UL. So again, we're drywalling, finishing, and, and moving past these spots. This one actually was a blocking issue, not a fire stopping issue, but just something we were working through with the design team. So less applicable in that conversation.
And in the last meeting, when I was up here and Commissioner Geiger asked about the schedule, and I, I talked about if you walked through the building and you knew what you were looking at, you would see things out of sequence. Well, this is a lot of what myself and my team see and, and knew that we were starting to lose the, the schedule gaps that we had in there, that we were going to start losing the battle specifically with the fireproofing and with some of the materials that were coming in. So that's what I was trying to allude to, but I, I felt that it would be better for Jason to explain it in detail with you all.
Yeah, the next three or four pictures show that very well. So what you saw in the last picture and in this picture are, uh, our electrician hanging lights in the air where we have no ceiling. We have no ceiling in those areas because we can't pass an above-ceiling inspection. We cannot pass those walls. And I'll say this, we, we have worked through this. We're past, uh, completely on the fourth floor, completely on the third floor, and about halfway on the second floor. But that's been, uh, a real long time coming to get there. We have a good rhythm now with the inspector we're working with and our full-time employee that's doing nothing but that, along with our subcontractor whose sole job is to do that work. I have a good, pretty good working rhythm now. Um, but the, the consequences of, of those delays have really compounded on us. have really compounded on us. So picture there showing lights that are hanging up where a ceiling's not installed, same here. This is a courtroom. This is a third-floor courtroom, that's a head wall. So you can see, we, we don't have that hung. That, that's work that needs to be complete. This is outside of an elevator in, this is in the main corridor on the fourth floor. And what you can see there is where we couldn't pass that wall inspection up at the top, we have framed that wall, we've hung that wall, we've put tile on that wall, and we've put drywall up and everything around there while we work through the fire stopping at the top of that wall condition. So we now have crews working through those frame conditions to finish the wall inspections. It, you know, it's, from our perspective, it's let's get everything done we can to keep the job moving forward, and those are the kind of conditions that result. These next two pictures are actually from water. We had a condensation issue in one of the courtrooms. So that's what a ceiling should look like when it's done. That's, that's hung, that's finished, that's got wood Z-clips on it to receive the finished grade stain grade wood paneling that goes on there. So that's what they should look like. And in the background, you can see we have a wall opened up for some water infiltration that has been remedied at this point. That's the same wall from the other side. And, and last picture I think Kyle has is, this is the fourth-floor south corridor. This is another edge of slab condition where the wall actually extends from one floor to the other. It's a non-typical installation for fire stopping, so we worked with Hilti to figure out how do we make this work, got that through, and then we got to go take the wall open and build it and get it inspected. So that, that's probably been our, our biggest struggle is the passing of inspections as a function of the fact that this is just a lot different than it was, I would say. We do have some other materials that we're working through getting onsite. Our casework supplier is 12 to 14 weeks on all stain grade mill work. So everything that doesn't have blocking and is unmeasured is three and a half months to hit our job. So it's, it's a real challenge. I'll say this as a positive, and, and, you know, I hate to think that there's a positive comes out of this, but we're actively working to get Phase Three on the street. That's something that'll happen here in the next week. As a result of this job being turned over a little later, it's built in a little bit of a buffer for us to procure materials in Phase Three. Our intentions are we're contracting that work in November. There are many pieces and parts of that job that are 10 months to 12 months for us to get. Gear, roofing, panels, glass and glazing, there are a lot of pieces that take a long time to get. So your standard 12-month jobs almost don't exist now because you have this run-up time to get material that previously didn't exist. For this current job, I think our air handling was 30 weeks. For our next job, we're already being told it's 52. So just everything is, you know, Kyle said it a minute ago, when we talk to suppliers, they say, well, this is what we're hearing today from a fabricator, and that's subject to change next week. So nothing is easy right now. I hope you see that there's some good progress across the street, but yeah, unfortunately, we are going to push our turnover date back.
When we bid out GMP-2, we didn't nearly have the material problems we're going to have for GMP-3. So this, this delay does allow us time because, like Jason said, we're moving forward with bidding GMP-3 and can build in that, that time. I can tell you that just from jumping from one project to the other, the Parklex panels are the wooden-like panels that are used on the courthouse. So we tested those materials. We went to a lot of places that utilize them and have utilized them for several years and beat on them, scratched them, tried to do everything to them before we decided we were going to use them. And we used them at the courthouse, and then we said, yeah, we're going to use them at a little bit at the EMS headquarters while I'm sitting on a, on a request to be able to use something different than Parklex because they can't get it. So that is, that is the environment we're in. You know, the minute you do due diligence on what to use, it's not available, which is why I'm not going to tell you exactly what carpet or what LVT is going to be in there, because I'm, I'm going to figure it out when I get there and, and make the best decision on, based on what's available at that time. But I wanted to put, put Jason up here. Obviously, there's been a lot of other things we're working through. We've got all sorts of agreements that have to be done for the public plaza, both with the city and the adjacent users, users, adjacent property owners. So we're working through all of those, and like I said, the bulk of our time specifically between ITS and myself is spent on move management at this point. We're actually, if we're not answering questions on GMP-3 or the renovations of the 1975 courthouse, we're working specifically on move management, which seems crazy considering it would, it's, it's months away, but it's, it's that much to look at about how can you do it and how can you operate almost a building and a half at the same time? So, very difficult. Open for questions, though.
Not a question, but for the general public that may be watching on television, they've probably all seen a UL stamp, but they may not know when you, they hear you say UL, and they might not put the two together. Can you explain that? And just a quick, brief definition again for the general public of what fire stopping is. It may seem obvious, but there may be some people watching that don't know what you mean when you say that.
Yeah, so a UL test is a certified test of, in this case, a wall assembly where they build the exact wall assembly as it's going to be built in the field, and then they put it in a condition of fire, right? So they have an assembly that lights a fuel and sprays fire on that assembly to validate that it will last whatever it's rated to last. In many cases, it's an hour, some cases it's two and/or three, just depends on where and why. That's, architects really define all of the where and why, and we're doing the installation of that.
And that's, that's underwriter's laboratory, right?
Correct, thank you.
And that's the little stamp?
That's right.
That people see all over everything that they buy.
Yep.
Instead of like your core.
So all of that stuff has gone through very thorough testing. Yeah, that's right.
So for every condition that we have, meaning if it's four pipes that come through the ground versus two pipes and it doesn't match something that's in there, we have to have an engineering justification done.
Yeah, and you asked, you also said, Blake, what a firewall is. So a firewall is installed in the building to create safe passage for folks getting out of a facility. Oftentimes, those are corridors, there are living spaces in terms of your hospitals and residential areas, there are stairwells, there are elevator risers.
Shafts.
Shafts, thank you. So anywhere where you would need to egress the facility or somebody would potentially be in a space where they needed to wait or stay safely, that's what those spaces are.
I can tell you, if you look at the fire stopping in our jail versus the fire stopping in our courthouse, you'll, you'll see Picasso versus, you know, a five-year-old art project. It's very, it's, it's night and day, just the code change.
Well, and it may be worth mentioning to anybody that's watching that wants to know. So the Department of Insurance is who writes the code. And then, so when did you say it changed?
2018.
18. So what that tells you is something happened or there was a pattern of something happening with fire stopping that the code needed to be addressed, and that's, you know, what, what happens is there are faults and liabilities to insurance companies, and that's who writes the code.
Usually written for a reason.
And it's also important to note that the county hires their own construction materials testing group that comes through and sits and goes behind Jason's staff and makes sure that everything is installed exactly the way it is so that it's safe for the public.
Okay, additional questions or comments? Thank you very much for the update. I continue to hear positive comments from courthouse staff about the collaboration and the way the process has worked. I didn't know after you shut them down two or three days whether they would still say that or not, but it seems that they do, so.
We're going to keep pushing the envelope.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. We move now to item 3.5, Frankless Park Barn Replacement Project Update.
I can go myself here. Wanted to kind of give a narrative of where we are with the barn project. Our utility work is about 50% complete, and that's obviously a pretty complicated and significant portion of the project. We're trying to get all the water lines complete and pressurized and tested in the next 20 days, and at that point, we'll coordinate a one-day water shutdown at the park to tie in and abandon the old water line. So part of this process is bringing in a new water line from, from outside the park, literally from the backflow. So we'll coordinate that with active living in parks. And we've already identified two different windows of days that are light on reservations, and of course, we bring in porta-johns for certain portions of the, of the park that were rented out or heavy use. We have soft digs completed to expose all of the electrical, and we're waiting on confirmation of when the new transformer will be built from Duke. So like the conversation we just had about materials, you just have to kind of wait and see where they used to have it to you on next Thursday. The barn site has been graded, the footings are complete, and the underslab and plumbing and electrical work is complete. And this, this kind of shows you when we first started rolling out there, and I kind of wanted to show you the second picture on the bottom. So that's what you're looking at is unsuitable soil. So when it looks like it's mud and it rolls, it's really because it's mud and it rolls, and that's what we end up having to dig out. So that kind of shows you. So I'll give you a good news and bad news scenario. We have not hit any rock, but you could go pick all my other construction sites, and we have, but we've hit a lot of unsuitable soils, but we have not hit rocks. So quite frankly, for underground utilities and the amount we've had it done, I'd rather take the unsuitable soils versus the rock. So this kind of shows you them digging out for the footings right here, putting in all your rebar, those are the footings going in. That's your elevator shaft, so the barn will have an elevator. The first vertical construction that will be seen over the next few weeks is actually the masonry elevator shaft, and that'll go up right after the slab. And weather permitting, as of last week, the slab was going to start this week. I'm still very confident that it will. So we'll hopefully see vertical construction in the next two to three weeks. And then right after that is when you'll start to bring in all our glue-lamp structures, and it'll actually start to look like something and go together. This just shows you all your underground plumbing that'll come out. And then that is what all of your electric and water lines, and those are the actual water lines leaving the facility that are going to go down towards the Rubens Road. If you all know where that is, it's on the kind of the backside of the lake, if you will, and that's where our, our water and our electric comes in. Well, one portion of it, I should say. So open for any questions.
So one, one question and an acceptable answer is I'm not prepared to answer that. What impact has there been on this construction project by the county taking the steps to have ownership of the property transferred from the state where we formerly leased it to now when we own it? Has that made it a little easier on the approval side? I know that before you said there were some challenges sometimes.
Yes, so easements were challenges with the state. The last easement that we did, if some of you might have recalled, it was a lower lot restroom, and we put in a sewer line. And when we did it, we put in a big enough sewer line to handle future growth on that side of the park, because if you're going to go through the trouble of putting that in, put it in big enough so you can add to it. And we waited 14 months for the state to sign off on the easement. It's not, the easement's not with us, it's with the City of Concord and Mossack, and I still couldn't get them to sign it. So no, it's, it's, it's been much easier. In fact, we've already had one easement with the city already on the water line, and it went in front of their council, and that's been going well. And the, the other thing I would kind of allude to is prior, if we wanted to do anything, even include adding a 10-by-12 storage shed that maybe a Kubota or a UTV would park in, we would have to go through several steps of state approval to put that on the property. And obviously, we no longer have to. So yes, and, and as we move forward with the rest of Stonewall Jackson, it'll get easier with other things like the public safety training facility.
Well, and that was what predicated my question, was when we enter into some of the more challenging aspects of, of the overall project out there, then we can look back and say, yes, this may be difficult, but it saved us time and money on this side.
Yes. And even though it's not related to this project, the county attorney and myself and Jonathan Marshall have been working on a right-of-entry for the rest of Stonewall Jackson, so for the parcels we don't own that we need to start getting into and primarily doing environmental and geotechnical testing for any future use of that property. We're just, we, we're not going to wait for the transaction, so we're, we've prepared a right-of-entry to get that permission.
Yeah, and perhaps at some point soon, we might include an update on that overall project, but it has taken far, far longer to dot all the i's and cross the t's with the state of North Carolina than we might have anticipated, but I think it will be worth it in the end.
Yes, I actually have a, a meeting with Mr. Marshall this week to go over. He's been working with the multiple state agencies. So part of that delay was they lost some people on their side of the fence that were critical in the beginning of the project, and we've since got everybody, I guess, looped back up in terms of what, what all the, you know, the arrangements were going to be. And I really feel like we're back on track and headed probably in the next month or two to have some, some positive information moving forward with the board.
And I'm not sure if we've discussed it here or not, but Jonathan Marshall is filling in on a, sort of a contract basis, helping with that. That's his post-retirement entertainment.
Correct. He, he spends a couple hours of week chasing all the down, the different state folks and making sure that all the meets and bounds are right, that we're getting things recorded and working out all the legal agreements so that we can move forward with the, the use of the rest of that facility.
Great. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we move now to the innovation report, and welcome Todd Shanley.
We're going to talk about our Fail Forward project this evening, but first, I wanted to kind of just jump right into a press release you may have seen this last week, that once again, Cabarrus County's been recognized by the Center for Digital Government as the number-two county for IT services in the nation. So we did, we have placed first in the past in 2021, and then second in '20, and then first in '19, so we'll, we strive to be back in that number-one slot next year. We, we play ping pong with our friends in Arlington, Virginia. They've, we've gone back and forth with them and have a good rivalry built up there. Obviously, them receiving the new Amazon facility this year, we'll, we'll brag a lot about, about our new growth opportunities here in Cabarrus County next year. So just proud to, proud of the team, and it's a, not just a word for the IT department, but all of Cabarrus County, because the survey is basically a thesis that we have to, to write about all of the technology and innovation that goes on here. But tonight, I want to talk a little bit about the project that we started back in May of '21. It's from the Center of Public Impact. We, we partnered with them to, with a project they call Fail Forward. We had three departments that participated in that, the Tax Office, Planning and Development, and the Department of Human Services. Tonight, we have David Thrift and Amy Lopez here from the Tax Office to tell you about their, their project and their, what they did. I'm going to just review a little bit about what, what that project entailed without stealing too much of their thunder and getting into their details, but there was a lot of, there were nine four-hour workshops that each of those departments had to commit to, and then over that, there were eight to 12 action plans that had to be, come up with. They, all of us as department heads and maybe some of you as board members participated in the four masterclass sessions that were available over the last year, so we did those quarterly. There was a lot of good information that came out of those. And then on the county side, we were, you know, we had to participate. So we had to find three solid departments that were going to, to really step into this and engage in this process. Failure is something that most of us don't, it's a, it's a bad word. We don't, we don't like to think about failure, but those three groups really, really dove in and understood the, the process and, and participated at their, with their, with their full hearts. But I'm going to stop talking and let Amy and David take over and, and tell you about the process that they went through.
So, good evening. As Todd said, the Tax Department is one of the three departments to be included in this program. Hearing about the program initially, just the, the name Fail Forward was intriguing. Certainly something that we don't talk about often is, is our failures. But the idea of how we take those failures and move forward from them is certainly something I was interested in, in becoming involved with. So we'll start with, you know, kind of who was involved from the Tax Department. I was tasked to identify our Fail Forward team. We were looking for six to 10 employees representing all levels of hierarchy from staff to supervisors to senior staff, optimally bringing diverse perspectives, but also the ability to collaborate. So the result of that team So the result of that team search is on your screen here. Andrew Barrier, Senior Mapper in our Land Records Department, became our project manager for this. I nominated Andrew for the role of project manager based on some potential I'd, I'd seen in him. And I can tell you, he excelled in that leadership role. Amy Lopez, Accounting Technician in our Collections Department, became our Learning Lead. Another example of, of one of the Tax Department's emerging leaders that just really excelled through this project and through this role. Also to note, the only one of our team who was willing to come before you and help me present. So however reluctant she was to do that, she is showing leadership in that, stepping up to do that. So the rest of the group are, some of them are here tonight. I just want to say that each of them made a significant contribution, both with time, their input and their expertise throughout this program, making it successful. So Becky Overcash, an Assessment Associate in our, our Revale Department, who as of June 30th has retired, but she was instrumental in this process. Jane Dano, Real Property Appraiser in our Revale Department. Janice Morrison, our Tax Collections Manager. Jerry McClanahan, Personal Property Analyst. Kevin Gates, our Senior Tax Auditor. And Severn Stovall, the Senior Real Property Appraiser. So for those, again, just want to say thanks to all of y'all. So okay, what, what are we going to focus on in this process? CPI asked me to identify some areas of concern that I would have the group focus on over the course of the year. So the focus statement that developed from that process is that we have ample opportunity to improve our customer service by analyzing how we educate our taxpayers and how we respond to taxpayer complaints. Property taxation is complex. The paperwork, the processes, the calculations, assessments, bills, filing requirements, all those things are not common knowledge necessarily to our typical taxpayers. Complaints often arise or often a result of a lack of understanding by the taxpayer. So while we provide the right answer, most of the time, giving them facts and quoting statutes, I think we have some education and transparency efforts that potentially miss an opportunity to help them understand the process more and make decisions more holistically. So our focus was going to be increased transparency and taxpayer education. And so how do we address those things? Well, CPI had a plan for us. As Todd mentioned, some of this, nine workshops covering three different phases of, of action and learning. We had Phase One where we spent time just understanding where we were at, identifying barriers. Phase Two, had some time to experiment and test some ideas. Phase Three was when we embedded a particular project. So CPI also provided some, some resources for us. One of us, one of which was initially described by someone as the dreaded mirror board. So this is an application that was initially a, a challenge to learn. We came to find out that it was an awesome collaboration tool and really an incredible way to facilitate the process. So this was an, a board that we all had access to. So as we had our meetings, as we had our workshops, everyone could participate. And also, the, the board is still available and the prior meetings and workshops were available so we could go back and look at our work and track through the entire project. So getting into Phase One, we spent a lot of time working to understand our barriers. Who was involved? Who were the stakeholders that we would need to work with and consider? We conducted interviews to find out directly from those stakeholders what our barriers to success would be. We found that workload and job duties make it hard to identify and deal with issues for our staff. We found that there's often some disconnect between frontline staff and management in a matter of perspectives. So we created some insights based off of that understanding. One of those being that staff are reluctant to initiate changes in systems, policies or programs because they're not sure if they have the power to do so. And that can inhibit their, their talent and motivation, diminish their ability to serve our taxpayers. Another insight is that the, the general public we are serving is, is diverse and different. And they have different ways that they need to be communicated with to be effective. And so the more ways we can communicate our messages, the more opportunities they have to receive those messages. And that sharing information effectively can help prevent that confusion and help support our staff in answering those questions. So then after that, we, we moved kind of to Phase Two, which was, you know, how do we determine the process of breaking down those barriers? How might we empower our frontline workers to initiate changes in systems? How might we better learn what is working, what's not working in regards to how we share information with the public? So we put together a lot of ideas on things that we could do. And we prioritized what the group felt like were the best ideas. But before putting in anything into place, we wanted to make sure we tested those ideas. That was one of the main. On the next slide, you'll see a kind of a flow chart of, from our mirror board on one of those, those experiments. I know you can't see the detail here because of the size, but just to get a feel for the process of identifying that insight, creating an idea that, that can address that, going through and analyzing in a sample test whether we should proceed or go a different direction. So we had a couple of fails with our initial ideas when we started off. Our first step, we imagined an idea of surveying taxpayers to determine what, what our concern points were. The plan being, the ultimate plan being to send the survey out with our annual mailings so we can get direct feedback. We tested that on a small sample scale with identifying some taxpayers and then some that came into the office during this period. And what we found was one that was, it was more trust than we expected from those taxpayers, even the ones that were upset, which was good. But two, we were hearing the same kind of things we typically heard when we talked amongst ourselves with staff on what, what the issues were. So we kind of identified that staff, staff already knew what the taxpayers' concerns were. They, they've been hearing those. So determining that idea of sending a survey out would, would not be something we want to pursue. It would be simply costly and we wouldn't be getting information that was successful. So we pivoted to an idea that we would do an internal audit of the commonly asked questions within our staff group. We did some testing with that and kind of the fail there was just identifying that just looking at a list of issues didn't really address what the scope of this project was, was to be. We needed to incorporate that into a better idea and what the team could do with that. So really, the pivot there was to move to combine that aspect with another idea that we had that focused on involving staff. And that became our main project to focus on. It was, the focus was to incentivize employees to initiate changes and be a part of the process. And that would be the one then we would move to, to the embed stage. And happy to have Amy here to tell you a little bit about that project and kind of her perspective on it.
So I am here to talk about our STAR Award, which is the program to award the employees of Tax Administration with the best recognition of problems in the department and/or the best solutions or ideas for improvement. Yeah, this was our final experiment. A main setback of our original goal to have better communications with taxpayers was that employees did not feel comfortable bringing their problems and ideas to upper management. We wanted to be as transparent as possible with our fellow coworkers and ensure that, ensure, ensure them that their ideas are being both heard and implemented. Our plan was to gather input from our coworkers and have them point out problems that they have encountered in their work environment. And if, and if they have them, also suggest solutions to those issues. We believe that this will ultimately allow us to provide better service to the taxpayers and improve the workplace for administration, Tax Administration employees. Our other ideas through this Fail Forward program, which he, Mr. Thrift explained, really just led us to things we already knew. And we hope that this program award will allow some ideas and problems that we may not have been aware of to come to light. So I'll give a little summary of the program. We created a Microsoft form online and sent it out to all the employees of Tax Administration. In the form, they would submit their name and department and if they had a problem in mind, which they feel should be addressed. And there was also space for adding a solution to the problem if they had one. After a week or so of gathering submissions, the STAR Award Committee had a meeting where we looked over all of them, all the submissions, discussed, discussed each one and decided on a winner. Some factors that went into choosing the winner were improvement of service or workplace or safety, increase in productivity or revenue, reduction in redundancy, cost savings and energy and waste conservation. As a side note for the future, we plan to change up the committee, the committee participants to include different employees and letting this inaugural Fail Forward Committee take a, take a little break. But for right now, this first committee was just everybody in the Fail Forward program. We wanted, we want to maybe ask for volunteers or have supervisors keep an eye on who they might think would be a good addition to the team. Some ideas and suggestions submitted in the first round included improving our process for sending out listing forms, offering emails or classes to remind each of us to improve our customer service skills, creating an automated call to taxpayers to let them know their delinquency, having a customer service rep in the rotunda to direct taxpayers, and even having Mr. Thrift buy ice cream for everyone. That was my favorite. We plan on saving all the submissions that we've gotten each time to look back on and have them possibly win in the future. We want employees to know that their problems and ideas are just not put on the back burner and we'll consider them each round. For the next slide, you'll see the winners here. The winners for the first round were Stacy Livengood, Tax Collection Supervisor, and Rodney Everett, Real Property Appraiser. Our team created this newsletter that's up there to present to the, the Tax Administration staff to showcase the winners and, and their suggestions and give an update on the implementation of their ideas. We have given, oh, I think we've given you a printout if you wanted to read in detail. But just as an overview, Stacy's problem pointed out issues with the phone tree and the phone numbers of our different departments. She suggested that each department have their own phone number and no option for taxpayers to go through when they call. She hoped that this would reduce transferring calls and better customer service. Her idea led to an analysis that identified a technical issue with the phones that has now been fixed. And further steps are being taken as well to make our overall call response even more sufficient. Rodney thought that appraisers should have the option to contact homeowners before making a property visit, since in some parts of the county, he felt unsafe to show up at properties unannounced. He believes getting in contact with taxpayers will decrease multiple trips, save on gas and time, and overall show more respect to the homeowners in Cabarrus County. Mr. Thrift and supervisors in the Revaluation Department have met with the IT Department to see how contact information could be gathered for appraisers. And IT has finalized a report and they're starting to put it into service. So that was good on that one. We are set to start another round of the STAR Award this week. We hope that having the employees see this newsletter and read about the upper management, you know, really taking these into consideration and implementing on these ideas will increase participation. So then just lastly, what we've learned from collecting data to having the workshops over the course of this year, creating, testing ideas and evaluating, finally evaluating our final thoughts on how to sustain our work, I think we just truly learned how to fail forward. As he was explaining, we tested out our two smaller ideas and realized those had failed before coming up with the final STAR Award. The whole team worked together, analyzed what worked, what didn't and why, and arrived at a better version of our, of, after each test. We learned that our staff in the Tax Administration has some really great ideas involving procedures and problems in the office. And we were really pleased with this first round after all the submissions that we got. This program really made us think in ways that we probably would never have otherwise. It involved really creative thinking. And, you know, we really had to dissect each topic after each test that we did. And then lastly, the Center for Public Impact team was really great as well. They were always great at leading the workshops and getting us to speak up and have input. They would put their thoughts, they would put our thoughts into words really well and statements that ultimately got us to our next step in our processes. And they were always willing to help in any way possible. So yeah, I really enjoyed it and thank you so much for, for having us up here and listening.
Questions or comments? I, I read the STAR Award. I thought both of those were excellent ideas. And kind of one of those, you thought, wow, I wonder why we didn't think about that sooner?
Yeah, opportunities for us to fail, you know, and it's, and it was ironic that, you know, it wasn't by plan that they picked technology projects. It was just, it happened to be areas that we were able to figure out that we weren't meeting the needs of the constituents and were able to direct that and, and help out in, in both those scenarios. In the coming months, Kelly Sipper will, will come and talk about her projects and then Karen Colhoun will follow up. And so you'll hear more about the other, other projects we've done and, and completed in the last year. So I think you'll be, you'll be very impressed with, with all the stuff that's come up with.
I will point out, Commissioner Morris, that one of the benefits of this process and this project particularly has been allowing or opening the space for employees to report those ideas that they've seen, that they've, make sure we're, as management are, are hearing about those, put something in place to make sure that that is being heard and then show that we're implementing changes because of that. So, you know, a lot of these ideas are, are not new ideas, are not new problems, but the approach to identifying those, testing out a way to resolve them and then showing that implementation is the benefit of this process.
Kudos. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we move now to discussion items for action. First up is item 4.1 from Active Living in Parks: Fees and Charges Policy Change. We welcome Londa Strong for that item.
We have Joshua Kaufman with us as well. He is the, I don't know if to introduce him as the current Camp Spencer Park Program Manager or the new Senior Park Program Manager for Frank Lisk Park.
I'm good with either.
I don't know when the paperwork's finalized. So regardless, he is the manager out at, at Camp Spencer and that's where we have a, a comment, a question, a thing that we want to, you all to look at and see what you think about as far as our fee and charge policy. I'm sure you all remember this document. We bring it to you every November or try to, or December. And again, just like all of our documents, that they're working documents. And as things come up, we try to make it better. Currently, the camping and tent, I mean, cabin and tent policy states you 14 days in and then you have to leave for seven and then you can come back for 14. We'll let Joshua tell you what situation he's been running into over the last several months and we'll go a little bit deeper in that once he does that.
Well, the way the policy states is continuous stay for 14 days. So we have had numerous families, groups, tent camping, tent camping and cabins that'll stay. They know the policy, they'll stay 13 days and they'll be out for a day and then come back for another 13 or stay 12 days and then come back. So the continuous stay, the continuous 14 is what we're trying to get around. And it's several factors that, that come up for this. Cleanliness is a key factor. Someone's written a cabin for 14 days straight. A lot of dirtiness, damage could happen in those 14 days. Same way with the tent site, just trying to keep stuff clean, maintained is the reason why we're, one of the reasons why we want a justice policy to go to an extended stay of two to seven days. And then you had to be out seven. So it would be a max day of seven days, out seven, come back for seven. The extended stay aspect is for our weekenders. So if you come out and stay in a cabin or a tent site, it's two-day minimum during the summer or two, yeah, two days on the, for Friday, Saturday. So we do have So, we do have families that come back for a weekend, they leave, they come back for a weekend within a month. So, we didn't want it to affect them, they, how they want to do it. So, that's why we said anything past two, up to seven, you have to stay out seven. Um, and then you can come back. So, basically every 30 days, you can stay two weeks.
I asked Joshua to look and see if there were a lot of folks that stayed 14 days and he, he said there weren't a lot of issues or requests for 14 days. So, we didn't feel like we were actually
Yeah.
taking away from recreation, still providing, uh, spaces for everyone to come in instead of people coming in and just staying.
Yeah. And most of our, most of our stuff is weekend, three days, maybe four, uh, for a long weekend. Um, but I want to say I just finished our numbers this year and I mean, we were far and away what our normal stay is for the previous couple of years. I know we've had COVID even before that. Um, I think our cabins were like a hundred percent over and our tent sites was like a hundred and fifty to two hundred percent over for stays, um, this last fiscal year. So, I mean, it's busy. Um, I know even in the winter, we were busier than what we have been in the past. So, more people are coming out, which is a good thing and then letting people, letting more people come out and enjoy it than some people staying that 14 days all in a row.
And that was a question I was going to ask. How is it impacting availability for other folks? I mean, have you had a waiting list or undoubtedly not, or they couldn't get in for the second 14 days?
Um, tent sites are, are a little bit easier to come. Um, so tent sites, I mean, we'll have one or two, we have seven sites, we'll have one or two rented on a weekend, maybe three. So, you'll see that a little bit more. cabins, I mean, I'm telling people now that if they want to stay in a cabin, they got to call these two, three weeks in advance because we're so booked.
Right.
Um, and I've had a lot of people call me to stay monthly and we tell them, no, we can't do that. We're not a long, long-term camping area. Uh, we're mostly for weekend families, people want to get away on a staycation, that sort of thing. Uh, but I have had a lot of calls about that in the past, probably two, three months.
How many cabins are there at Camp Spencer?
Uh, we have six cabins and seven tent sites and then one group site for Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, church groups, some type of organization.
Normally the 14 day stay is during the week. They don't start on a weekend, they'll start it during the week and so that it's not as crowded during the week. Normally the weekends are where we'll see more. So, few issues over the last several months, three months?
Yeah, about three months.
About three months worth. It's, it's just continuing 13 days, out a day and then coming back. And so, our current policy allows that because it states 14 days. Then you have to be out for seven. So, we're hoping this will take care of that issue where we say two, up to seven.
Yeah.
And then out for seven.
I, I mean, certainly couldn't rent a hotel room for $50, but, but then if you're renting it for 14 days, that's $700. So, it's not like it's free.
Right. And, and that is mistaken one. That was $65 instead of 50. Um, I had the old fee and charge policy out when I wrote this and I was like, oh.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so the current price is 65?
Yes.
Yeah.
Tent sites are still 15?
Yep.
Yeah.
Commissioners, questions, comments? Sounds like a reasonable change to me. Yeah. All right, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can, can I bring something to your all's attention that has nothing to do with this? You might get a phone call. I just found out. Somebody started a rumor we're canceling the dances on Friday night at the senior center. We are not. We have not, don't plan to. So, evidently Teresa Kaiser's phone has just been blowing up and she's on vacation this week. Uh, so if you get a phone call, it's not true.
Yeah, to the contrary, we were just talking about dancing surfaces.
That's right.
Yeah. So, good. Glad to clarify that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we move now to item 4.2, Appointments to Boards and Committees. Uh, you all have a list of those in your agenda and have received it earlier by email. Uh, does anyone have any questions or comments about any of those? Uh, if not, we will move to item 4.3, which is North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Legislative Goals. And I think we have included in the agenda, um, items from previous years, yeah, the 2021 legislative goals as well as the handbook. Uh, that is something that we can certainly accept any recommendations now or that's something that you can look at and submit, um, uh, later on as well. Did anybody have anything they wanted to bring up tonight about, uh, something that is missing that they feel like should be included?
I did just want to know that these need to be approved at August regular meeting. They'll need to be submitted at, um, before our next sector meetings. Um, if there's any changes or updates we want to make, just be sure to get to, to everyone before our August regular meeting.
Yeah, which I was getting ready to say, that gives us a whole month, but today is August. Yes. Yeah, so does anybody have anything tonight that they wanted to, to talk about or add to? That they're pretty, pretty comprehensive. Some of those have been on there for, for a number of years, uh, and, and continue to be. Uh, but if anybody thinks of any, anything else, uh, let us know, let Lauren know, uh, as soon as possible and we'll get it on the agenda for our regular August meeting. Okay, next up is item 4.4 from Cabarrus County Schools Culinary Arts Renovation. We're glad to have Chuck Taylor with us to talk about that item.
Good evening, Commissioners. Tonight I would like to ask you, uh, to consider and approve moving some funds from some completed projects. We had some KEFOF projects or access, uh, projects last year that you awarded and funded us graciously and we greatly appreciate that. Uh, we have some funds left over in that. We also have some funds left over in the Mount Pleasant High School paving project, uh, which by the way is, to my knowledge, the first ever complete repaving of a school in Cabarrus County history. That's what all my predecessors are telling me. So, we're very proud of that. And just so you know, we also were able to repave Concord Middle School this year, the entire parking lot. We thought that was going to be a partial, but we were able to work it out and that's a complete repave. I just wanted to let you know that and how thankful we are for all those funds. But tonight I'm asking you to move these funds to a project for the Culinary Arts Teaching Lab at Concord High School. This project started out with a limited scope, but as we got further into it and as the economic conditions have changed over the last few years, it's just got deeper and deeper and deeper. Our expected cost on that was around 150,000. It came in at the low bid of 606,000. So, where we were fortunate on some bids, we were definitely not fortunate on this one. We had originally thought we were going to be able to reuse the equipment from the original culinary arts lab at Hickory Ridge High School. However, that equipment's 15 years old. It's gas operated equipment and we do not like to put gas operated equipment in schools, especially in older school like Concord. If we're going to have to replace that equipment, we want to go electric. We want to add a new electric service to feed that and some of that's what's driving the cost. Uh, of course, the economic conditions that they are driving that cost, supply chain, labor shortages, issues like that. The same thing that's driving all the other costs up are affecting us. The trip to the grocery store, we all see that change. So, with that, I'd like to open it up to any questions you may have.
Chuck, uh, I was thinking, maybe I, obviously thinking wrong, but the culinary arts was out at Hickory Ridge?
Yes, sir. That, that was out there, but it has been moved to Concord High School due to demand. We have a lot of students at Concord High School that want that class and we're just not getting the students to sign up at Hickory Ridge High.
Well, what about the equipment that we bought for Hickory Ridge? Can it not be used in Concord?
It could if we were to go gas because most of that cooking equipment is gas. It's 15 years old.
Yeah.
It's at the end of its life cycle and a lot of that equipment, once you move it, anything that's been sitting for a long time like that, anybody that knows about equipment, I know you know about equipment, uh, it's not always the same after it's moved as it was before you move it.
Right. So, what are we going to do with the equipment? Are we, or are we going to still have culinary arts in Hickory Ridge?
Portions of that equipment will still be used there and it's still in use for parts of their cooking programs, their consumer life safety courses and things like that. Other parts of it, refrigeration equipment, the stainless steel sinks, we are utilizing that and moving it to the new culinary arts to keep that cost down.
Well, you know, I, I, I don't know how the rest of the commissioners feel. You know, this is a pretty heavy chunk. You know, when I look at the, uh, the long list of deferred maintenance items that are things that have been kicked down the road for quite some time and then come up with a $600,000, uh, request for culinary arts in Concord, that's pretty hard to kick, Chuck.
It is, it is. And in its defense, we thought we could get this done at a lot lower price and we were trying to handle it without having to come to the commissioners and the county to ask for funding.
Yeah.
However, it hasn't turned out that way, but this is a very vital and important, uh, program to Concord High School and those students in that area. This is a main feeder to the hospitality sector of our county and it is vitally important and it's one that I'm passionate about. So, I'm going to fight for it really hard.
Well, I agree with you. Uh, you know, this has been a very popular course when it was at Hickory Ridge. I can see where the demand would be. And, uh, my next question is, this is a little tough one for you here, but do you think the school board would want to do a match with us on some of their, uh, their, uh, fund balance?
That is a question for Carol Herndon and the school board. Uh, I would be happy to ask that question. My only issue and, and the reason I'm bringing it to you tonight is time.
Right.
In order for me to get this open for the beginning of school, I have to act now. Uh, so, I'd be happy to ask a question, but I really need your assistance.
And I understand your position, I, that puts you in, but you know, like I say, it's, it's, if we didn't have such a pressing issue with deferred maintenance, things like that, it'd probably be a no-brainer. But with those issues, we, we're going to put them to the side so we can do this. And, uh, if, if we was to try to participate in this, I think that it would be, um, good for the school board to say, well.
Maybe a good time for me to bring up that we have already put in 100,000 of that.
Of the 600?
Yes, sir.
So, your ask is 506?
Actually, my ask is, I believe it was 450. Utilizing funds left over from other projects that we have more favorable bidding on.
The leftovers, right, using that. And so, we're looking at a net ask of 450, something like that?
It's right at 450 is what we would like to move.
Yeah. Well, well, maybe they'll, the school board will think hard about having us on this one. That's just my idea, Chuck. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
The fact that you did a paving project and have funds left over means I'm likely to say, hey, great job in managing those funds. These are yours anyway. Here you go, go ahead. So, that to me is, uh, in this climate, I mean, it's unheard of. So, I, no, I'm, I guess I'm of the opinion, we, we've already let these funds to the school system and they've made the decision to weigh a maintenance project or some other project versus the demand that they have here, although I'm a little confused when it says if the BOC and the BOE agree. Has, had, I, I was under the assumption that Board of Education had already made this choice or call, so I'm not sure what that means in our little packet here.
Okay, so what that means, the short and long of it is, I am presenting the same thing for the culinary arts to the Board of Education as soon as I leave this meeting. But I wanted to put it before the Board of Commissioners to move the funds because the Board of Education is not going to approve it unless funds are there.
Mr. Chairman, that we, we've already approved the funds to go to the school system and they can determine how best to, uh, do their projects at, at Mr. Taylor's guidance and supervision.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? All right.
May I make a comment, sir?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chu, I understand exactly what you're saying. The, uh, issue is, we kept that from going to the top of the list because we felt like in-house, we were going to be able to accomplish that. Otherwise, it would have been at the top of that list, if that helps any at all.
Is that what they're asking for? Yeah. So, is this going to be sufficient for us? Are you wanting action on this tonight?
I would not refuse it, sir.
Yeah. Okay. If it is the pleasure of the board, uh, then I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules, uh, to address this issue tonight. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Uh, and then I would, um, entertain a motion as to which direction you'd like to go on this.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve the request to move funds from access control projects and Mount Pleasant High School paving project to culinary arts renovation at Concord High School and finance to prepare the appropriate budget.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion, that is a four, two, four yea, one no. Motion passes.
And let, and let me reiterate, reiterate again, Mr. Chairman and Chuck, you know, you know, I've been doing this a long time and when I look at the big picture of the things that we got going on, you know, this is a good sizable chunk of money.
Yes, sir.
And everybody's screaming wanting money, you know, and now we're going to put this much money into the, a program that we've already got at one time, but the school system moved it. And that was sort of my, uh, the reasoning behind me saying, well, if the school system moved it, they should pay for it or part of it. That was my reasoning, Mr. Chairman.
Great. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you very much, everyone, and I'm thanking you for all the future shifts.
All right. Appreciate it. Okay, we move now to item 4.5, uh, Fiscal Year 22 Funding Reappropriations. And I think Raj is going to address that one. Oh, there, I kept looking around for him and he's up there. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Every year at the August meeting, we bring to you a reappropriation request like the one being presented tonight, but, uh, this afternoon. Funds budgeted in the prior fiscal year FY '22 need to be carried over to the current fiscal year FY '23 for use. These funds were not used in FY '22 for a variety of reasons. Carrying over these funds from FY '22 to FY '23 through a appropriation of fund balance or a revenue, or revenue for reimbursement grants is required to complete the purchase as planned. The total appropriation request this year amounts to a little over $3.3 million. Approximately one-third of that is, uh, or 1.17 million of it, uh, is a result of the use of ARP funding. The details of the request are included as part of the agenda item and I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, questions for Raj? Okay, very good. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, we move now to item 4.6 from DHS Emergency Rental Assistance Program and we're happy to have Karen Calhoun and Laura Light with us for that item.
Good evening, Commissioners. I want to give you a brief update on where we are. Lauren, do you have the PowerPoint?
Thank you.
The Emergency Rental Assistance Program. So looking at where we are to date for, as of June 30th, we have 1,211 households, individual households that we've assisted with the Emergency Rental Assistance Program and you can see just above there, uh, the breakdown, uh, the top two numbers, DHS has worked through those applications and with our partnership with Cooperative Christian Ministries, they have assisted us with 389 applications. The total disbursements to date through June 30th is 9.6 million and that is the combination of rent, utilities and administration. 8.6 million has gone out for rent and utilities, 504,000 and administration, just under that with 497,000. Again, 9.6 million and 1,211 households that we've avoided evictions on, so we're quite proud of the work that our staff have done. As you all know, as we provided updates, that's been challenging. We've had some staffing issues, uh, over the year and several months that we've been operating the program, but we have gotten almost fully staffed. We're holding back on a couple of positions because of the administrative funding limitations, but we're doing much better at that. And just looking at our dashboard, I'll call your attention to the upper right corner, 14.7 million in outstanding requests. That is driven by the user whenever they put in the amount of rent or utilities that they need, not actually what they might be eligible for. But in looking at that particular number and in correlation to the funding that we have, that's why we're here tonight to make the presentation, to bring you up to date to where we are with our numbers and our data, but also with where we are with our funding. So the other part of that is, we have dual requests, second and third requests and even fourth requests, sometimes when people go back in and reapply. So we know there's some duplication in there in that 14.7 million, but still, that's a considerably high number of requests that are still outstanding. When you look at the other numbers, uh, they're not quite as current, uh, when I have 9.6 million that we've actually pushed out through finance now.
Karen?
Yes.
Is that duplication from people who were turned down or for people who have gone through and now need more help?
It's both. And some will reapply, some we've already helped a first time, a second time, possibly even asking for a third time, but there's also, you know, it could be first time requests that are in there that we haven't helped them yet or gotten to their application just yet. So it's a blend of all of that. Uh, and again, that number is exceptionally high. We know that it's, you know, as far as whenever we actually process the applications, most likely that's going to come down considerably because there's duplicates in there, there's folks that may be ineligible for the program and that through process of elimination would come down. And then just looking at the, the dashboard for Cooperative Christian Ministries, you add another two, 2 million to that, so you're looking at 16.7 million in requests that are out there right now. And that kind of brings us to where we are with our request to pause. So we're requesting permission to pause the current intake of new applications starting September 1st. And the reason for that is because we do have that 16.7 million out there in requests with an available balance right now of funding of a little over $7 million with the ability to request additional funds from U.S. Treasury and NC Pro who operates the NC Hope program, we can ask for additional funds for, from them as well, up to about 8.8 million. So once we work through those pending applications and requests that are sitting out there, that'll help us determine if we can reopen and stop the pause on the intake of the new applications. We just feel like it's going to be smart to do that, to kind of stretch this out a little bit, see where we are. Uh, several other counties that have operated the program, uh, in conjunction with us and with NC Hope have done a pause on their applications. We haven't done that yet. This is our first time asking to do that, but again, that is to give us the ability to get a handle on where we are with our funding. How many of these are going to be literally washed out and, and legitimate applications that we can pay out? I think if we continue to allow them to do those intakes right now, it kind of gives people false hope that they're going to get that application and that paid for and we really don't want to do that right now if we're not going to be able to have enough funding to cover it all.
When you get those applications, are they numbered?
They are numbered, aren't they? Yeah.
Kind of look at them in order which they came in?
Yeah. And we prioritize them right now based on what's called ERAP 2, uh, guidelines from the U.S. Department of Treasury. Uh, it has to be COVID-related and it's still COVID-related. That is one of the very first questions whenever someone applies, uh, as to whether or not they're eligible for, uh, any of the funding in, by way of assistance of utilities or rent. And so, um, that's one of those questions, there's like four or five that kind of pre-qualify them and so they work through those, they are numbered, but based on the priority, if they have an eviction notice, we try to use, we rise those to the top because we don't want anybody to be homeless.
And I'll just add to that, um, with the dashboard numbers, those are the applications that have come in online. That is not inclusive of the paper applications. Just to make that note.
So when you say can request additional funds up to 8.8 million, you mean eight, additional 8.8 million over and above the 7 million that we currently?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Yeah. Which is close, the two of those added together are close to the applications you have that you know, so there is a likelihood that there may be some additional opportunities, but you're just not sure.
We're just not sure.
Okay. That makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so when you say it has to be COVID-related, I had somebody inquire the other day about, um, how, how long the program was going to continue and if it was going to be paused and so forth and talking about the increase in rent that was impacting a lot of seniors in the community. That may not, I mean, would they be able to, uh, meet the test that that was COVID-related?
It's, yes, it's based on attestation, their statement is all we have to have for it being COVID-related.
Right. Okay.
And it can be an indirect impact, meaning rent has substantially increased.
Right.
With the market, fair market value.
Okay.
So it doesn't have to be a direct impact. It can be indirect. Financial hardship.
Other questions, Commissioners? How long would you anticipate that this pause may last?
That's tough to discern, just based on the numbers that are sitting out there, but I would imagine, um, looking at it after December would give us
Right.
A better feel for where we are and what we've been able to work through and then we can decide if we can lift the pause at that time or not. It's also, you know, part of the juggling act with us is the release of the funds. We have to spend 75% of it before they'll send us another allocation. And so the juggling of that, if we work too quickly and we've only got, for example, a million dollars left of an allocation and, and we're up to that 75%, the timing in getting the next wave of that funding, we're having to juggle that as well so that we don't make sure that we go in the red in any manner and we get the funds appropriated to us from Treasury or from the state so we can continue to operate the program, if that makes sense.
And you said that, that people in eviction situations get escalated, but people, new people coming on with an eviction situation are not going to be able to enter the program at all, right?
So if they have, that's, that's correct. So if they have, you know, a current application with us, we're going to work through that. We're still prioritizing based on the guidelines from Treasury, anybody that's got an eviction, we're going to rise those to the top because we don't want to see anybody, uh, have to move out of their home if we can prevent it and they're eligible for the program. We'll try to go ahead and make a commitment of payment and pay that rent and negotiate with the landlord to get that taken care of. So the, whenever the pause goes into effect, we want to roll out, you know, information to the public that we're going to be pausing the applications, pull back in any paper applications so that those won't be, being filled out anywhere and then just kind of work through what we've already got, already applied for. And then, once we work through that and work that down, we'll assess and evaluate if we can take that pause back off and take new applications again and then we would want to advertise that and put that back out there.
Has the federal government indicated how long they anticipate this program will continue or not?
Well, the funding that we have that's identified as ERAP 2 goes through September 30th of 2025. So as long as the funding lasts, it's either, it's the timeline, we can work it all the way to the end of the timeline or if we run out of funds.
Right. And most of the people, the, that are applying for this are seeking employment? I'm, I'm trying to formulate in my head how things are going to get better. Where they're going to be when?
Some are, some aren't. Uh, we do try to refer individuals to financial literacy so that they can afford to sustain after we've assisted them. We try to coach and counsel with them and make sure that what they're actually trying to get the program to pay for is even affordable to them if we can, you know, kind of coach them that way. Uh, we've seen situations where some of the rent is higher than double house payments and so that's not reasonable in this kind of a program for someone to sustain if they're not employed. So those kinds of things. We do, we do that financial literacy counseling with them. We refer them, uh, to Lily's Max program and to CCM who has financial literacy programs to help them with their budgeting.
Just to add to that as well, when we are looking at the application itself, um, one of the key components of this is not just determining eligibility, we have built that case management into the application and even though, um, the guidance is they don't have to maintain, we think of that as what are they going to do tomorrow or when this program ends. So, um, our staff has done really well with trying to ensure that housing is stable. So that's where that case management piece comes in of thinking about tomorrow or when the program ends. And that takes time. Um, right now, we are seeing a high demand of evictions and lockouts. So we're having to shift gears and, and making sure that we're prioritizing those applications, working closely with our sheriff's department, um, and making sure that if we can prevent the lockout, that that's what we're doing. So it does, making sure that we're shifting gears with homelessness, you know, versus someone whose landlord is willing to work with them.
Which certainly sounds like the right thing to do, but that makes it a slower process, I'm sure, which, which creates the backlog, yeah.
Yes. There you go. There goes it.
Yeah.
One of, one of the things that I found interesting about this was over at the Dream Center through the CCM's literacy, literacy program, they don't just help you and forget about you. You know, they, they're there and in some cases, a year, a year and a half to teach you how to do a budget, get a job, do a budget and stick to the budget and they follow up with you. So it's really a very effective program. The only sad thing about it is you can't do it so many people. You know, I mean, you've only got so much money, you've got so many people and, uh, I mean, we're not going to lose them all, we're going to save some and that's the ones that, you know, we're working hard on. So it's a good program and I appreciate your effort on that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I did want Karen, if she could briefly, if you happen to know the answer to this. So she mentioned the September 30th, 2025 date for ERAP 2. We have a September 30th, 2022 date for ERAP 1. Do you remember how much money is left in that pot?
I believe it's a little over 900,000, so we're going to have to work that rather swiftly to make sure that we have that obligated by September 30th.
And so, so people that would inquire or that, that may be listening to this, correct me if I'm wrong, the message is, we're pausing applications because we fear the well may run dry before we finish this, so rather than wait to look at alternatives months down the line, that may be appropriate now. You, you mentioned not giving false hope, which I, I don't think any of us would want to do if we can't deliver.
Yeah. And, and, you know, caution to you, you'll probably get some complaints and some calls potentially, uh, simply because they'll be unhappy that, you know, their application didn't get put in before that pause was put into effect. But there again, you know, in all likelihood, the ones that are in there now may or may not be able to be fully served. We're hoping that they will be and that the money will hold out, but we're just not sure at this time. And this will give us the ability to manage this, get a handle on it and feel like we're in a better place with it, uh, and we will definitely open it back up if we're able to.
But the likelihood is that the pause is not going to impact anybody's ability to get assistance.
That is currently already applied.
Right.
That's correct.
Yeah. Okay. Other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we move to item 4.7, uh, Family Caregiver Support Program Grant, and we welcome Anthony Hodges back to the table.
Thank you again, Commissioners. Uh, this is regarding our Family Caregiver Support Program and, and as you all are familiar, this program, which we have through Department of Human Services, that supports instead of our normal clients we support, it supports those family members that care for those. That, uh, and we, we focused on, on anyone that's caring for a family member, but a lot of focus is on those individuals that may have Alzheimer's or another form of dementia. So helping assisting those caregivers and, and if any of you, as you know, caregiving is extremely difficult if you have a family member that you're taking care of, it's a 24-hour a day, 365-a-day thing. So we try to provide as much support as we can through a, a few different areas, through, uh, different trainings and we're actually starting a new training this year for our caregivers called Building Better Caregivers. We still will continue our powerful tools, we're actually adding another training, we've had some training on that, uh, providing care management, referrals, resources and also helping with some other things like nutritional supplements or economic supplies and that type of things. When we did our budget request for fiscal year 23, the state, the Area Agency on Aging hadn't given the final numbers yet on, on the, the numbers, so we budgeted based on last year's numbers. Uh, we, we got the, the allocation for fiscal year 23 in June and it was actually, uh, we budgeted 51,386 and we actually are receiving 58,941, so a difference of seven, an additional $7,555. Uh, there is not a cash match on those funds and we'll use those additional funds to increase the amount of rest that we're offering and then, like I said, increasing the training and some of the other supplies that we're doing.
Great. Questions for Anthony? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, we move to item 4.8 from Finance, State Fiscal Recovery Funds, and we have a new name to welcome, uh, to the table tonight, Jim Howden.
Can I can, uh, start this item so that I don't have to put you on the hot seat? So this is, the state has decided to allocate funding for, from the American Rescue Plan to libraries across the state. Uh, this is an additional $126,545. So this is in addition to our typical state aid, which is around 190,000 a year, uh, and this can be used for a wide range of, uh, expenses from materials, salaries, equipment, other operating expenses, and so that's what this agenda, agenda item is, and we are happy to have Jim here as our new Finance Director, uh, joining us from Orion County.
Thank you. Happy to be here.
Great. Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions on that item, Commissioners? Okay, if there are none, then we will move to 4.9, Update of Approved Institutions.
I can take this one? Okay. Good evening, Commissioners. Uh, we're asking the board to approve an updated institution list, which is part of our investment policy. As you're all aware, SunTrust and BBNT merged earlier this year, forming Truist. We had both of those institutions on our list. We are, uh, recommending that we remove both SunTrust and BBT and add Truist to that list. And I'll answer any questions.
So that's a pretty, pretty straightforward one?
I like the easy ones.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. Any questions on that? All right. Thank you. And we move now to item 4.10 from Human Resources, Structure and Comp Projects, and we welcome Lundie Covington to talk about that item.
I'll steal some of Lundie's thunder while she's walking up here, so, uh, this is not typical, uh, so usually we bring you our comp study projects as part of the budget process, uh, and this year we are bringing them to you, uh, as they are ready. And so she's going to talk about HR and IT this evening. Uh, we anticipate that there may be a future agenda item dealing with emergency medical services. Uh, we've been having some issues there around pay, uh, and so Lundie will walk you through the IT and HR recommendations, but just know, this is part of the market. But just know, this is part of the market study that would be for next fiscal year. We're just getting out ahead of it and bringing it to you today.
All right, thank you, Rodney. Good afternoon or evening at this point, commissioners. In addition to the presentation on the screen, you have a handout that Lauren provided to you. So that might be useful to you as we're going through this, just to give you kind of two points of reference. So I'm gonna start out, and Lauren, if you'll move us to the next slide. Sorry, didn't realize we were doing that tonight. And I may be, I may not be. Okay, so I'm gonna talk about the methodology for both projects. And then I'll talk about HR, and then turn it over to Todd and Paula to talk about the IT project. So as Rodney mentioned, we are getting out a little bit ahead of what we typically would be looking at for FY '23. This is the group that is basically kind of the miscellaneous departments, the all others. We did ask to look at these two groups a little bit early because we've had some challenges with each of them and some pretty specific needs. So we didn't want to just limit it to a comp review. We really had some specific goals in each of our areas to look at structure and job descriptions. So that is kind of the rationale. We did start the project literally about six months ago. So it has taken a while to get through this information and to bring a recommendation to you. But we also wanted to make sure we were able to catch up with the funding that would come through with this next year's budget. So the name Catapult hopefully is familiar. We had a business consultant who worked with us on the first portion of the project. She's new to us. Her name was Kendra Stewart. And then we had the compensation review, followed up by Becky Dratz, who is a familiar name, I believe. She's been with us multiple times presenting data. So we'll have, again, more detail as we go through each section of the slides. So on the compensation portion, just to kind of refresh, this is pretty familiar information. There's really one change over what we typically would do on the compensation review. We were only utilizing three data sources for this study. In the typical studies, we will do a county-wide, our county-sponsored survey. But that was not utilized here. And partially, the reason for that is the county data, government data, is included in their other benchmarks. But also, these departments really have comparators that are strong in other industries. They're not really limited to government employment. So we felt those would be adequate comparators. So again, the same median data points, 50th percentile as the targets, utilizing the market average, and then comparing that back to our internal data. So all of that is pretty comparable. All righty, so focusing on the HR section. I do have a Catapult report that I can share if you have an interest in that. I'll refer to a few of the components of that. But in order to kind of keep this brief tonight, I tried to pull out the significant information and blend it into this overall presentation. But for Human Resources, our focus was looking at modernizing our job titles and trying to build out a structure that was a better support for the county's needs. We started the project with a survey that went out to all of the department heads. So the consultant did ask our department head group for some specific feedback. She then followed up with some meetings with our county management team. And that included Mike, Rodney, and I believe Jonathan was a part of that as well. And then also, she interviewed the HR team and looking at it from each of those various perspectives to see what we really needed in the HR function for the county as we grow and evolve. With that, we had two basic recommendations that came out of that. And I'm gonna show you in just a moment, a new structure that definitely will put more focus on our strategic needs. And then also introducing some specialty titles to recognize that we have some folks with specialty skill sets. Just stop me at any point if I have questions. Again, I hope ours isn't too confusing, but I know it is a lot of information coming to you. So for the HR project, we literally are looking at two different divisions of our team. There's an operations side, and then a strategy side. So on the operations side, that's the group that I would basically consider the gotta-haves, the group that focuses on our real basic nuts and bolts. Our HRS system or our information system, pay, benefits. Training and development falls under that wing, as does our recruitment, or our fancy title for that we use more these days, is talent acquisition. So all of those things are, again, kind of those gotta-haves for the county. This is the team that would work on directly assisting with those transactional needs for our employees and our managers. This group would be a support group to our HR generalist, who I'll talk about just in a moment on the other side of the house. And again, just a good way to think about this team is they're the group that will be implementing county strategies. So again, the basic nuts and bolts. Then if you look to the right, the strategy arm, and that is definitely where we were weaker, and that came out in the survey data, as well as the county management needs that were expressed. So this is to kind of focus more on that. That is where our HR generalist job description would be housed. And this is the group that basically is partnering with our department heads, our areas to work on more strategic items such as leadership development, performance management, you know, kind of, again, focusing in those areas, succession planning. The title that we use in the HR field is HR Business Partner. And that's kind of a term that suggests we are trying to be more at the table with our business units to kind of help them through challenges and issues they have and solve problems with them. So that's definitely the side that this falls under. Each of these individuals in this area would be both a subject matter expert in a technical area, as well as have a department or set of departments that they act as a liaison for. So for example, we have somebody who works primarily with human services, is housed out there. But her skill set is very strong in employee relations. So if we have issues in other areas, we can kind of utilize her and pull her to help in other areas. So again, it's kind of a hybrid or mix, as we'll use this group. So thinking about this, this is the team that will work more on strategy development. I think of this group as more research-based, more innovative, so just a few examples. And then looking at our proposed org chart, and I'll try to explain kind of how this sets out with the color coding. So you'll see the operations side to the left, the strategy side to the right. The operations is gonna entail all of those areas that I was describing, the basic nuts and bolts. The strategy side will be the generalist, and I would work more with that group, as well as with our department heads on needs that they have. The color coding also shows we've got a vacancy right now with the generalist position. And that's one we're working to fill, hopefully with the new grades we're gonna roll out. And then the HR Deputy Director is a new position we had in the budget that we'll also be filling. The green boxes down below are future needs. I do want to just call out this stat. It's not really our purpose this evening, and this would definitely need to be a budget conversation. But one of the things that we heard through the data with our Catapult consultant is the average ratio is 1.4 HR professionals to each 100 employees. So if you do the math, we have around 1,300 full-time, yeah, 1,300 full-time employees. That would equate to over 18 HR staff members. And as you can see the chart up there, we are pretty lean. Even with the new Deputy Director ad, we'll be at 11. So, you know, we're servicing a lot of needs with a pretty small team. So at some point, that might be another consideration. But again, this is kind of evolving, so it's a project that will take us a while to get through. And then I wanted to share the functional titles that we would like to roll out or introduce. So there's three specialty areas, a benefit specialist, a training and delivery specialist, and a compensation specialist. And then a senior analyst, which is another level that our analysts can attain. Also, a part of this was recommending the elimination of our technician role. A technician is kind of an HR support role, HR assistant in some organizations. And the recommendation is to move that to an analyst. And I think part of that is recognizing that we are very lean, and we have people who have the skill set to do more. We lean on them to do more. And if we were to lose staff and needed to replace, we really would need to be looking at the level of an analyst versus a technician out in the marketplace to get the manpower that we need. So you'll see our portion in the top of your chart. If you have any questions, I'm happy to kind of talk through any of that. But we have a few people who are in roles that would be impacted. Ours is a little murkier than our IT counterparts because we have some positions to fill, and that might impact where some of our individuals land. That's why they're not all listed as a move across. I would estimate our project would be $70,000 or less. It just depends on how some of those pieces fall into place. So any questions on the HR portion of the study? All righty, well, let's move on then to IT. And I'll let Todd and Paula, who is a part of the HR team, she is actually one of our generalists, also used to serve as our recruitment specialist. And that's kind of her specialty skill set. So she's kind of leading both of those functions. And one of her first generalist projects was working with IT on this particular topic.
Absolutely. Yeah, I definitely want to thank Paula for all of her work. Let you go right now, Paula, and just talk about the time. The reason it took six months was that we have 40 people in IT now. I know that's, it's growing quickly. And we took the time to talk to all the supervisors, managers in the department to make sure that our, what people were doing aligned to what the job descriptions we had. Paula, do you want to talk a little bit about all the work that you did with the team to kind of walk, get Kendra and the team up to speed?
Sure. I first met with Todd to discuss his needs for his department, and he wanted to build out a career path, a career structure. And with orders to do that, we had to develop some descriptions and some positions that did not exist within our current structure. So I met with Kendra in each department individually in order to understand their needs, fill in the gaps, look at retention and recruitment from that aspect of it. And so that was a long, drawn-out process. It was very time-consuming to go through that. And that was, that was the overall goal, and that was what we were able to achieve.
So obviously, me as the, as the director of the department lead, my goal is recruitment and retention. So when I look at this, you know, I've been here for 25 years. Why did I stay? What was the reasoning behind that? It was that ability to be able to see progression through the organization. So I came here as an intern and was able to move into different paths. And, you know, my leadership saw opportunities to move me into that. So providing that larger range for salary gives us that ability to create junior and senior positions for us to move into. So maybe I can take a chance on and develop that talent for, depending on what we're getting. So you'll see in there that we have developers. And sometimes for our programmers, developers is what we're calling them these days. And that's some of the title changes that Kendra and Paula worked on, was modernizing that. We get so stuck in our government role sometimes, and we call programmer analyst. And, you know, that's great. What does that mean? Well, we're hiring developers today to be programmers or what have you. So that's, we're trying to make sure that we're competing because we're not just competing against, in our department, we're not just competing against other governments. Although those folks in the governments nearby are stealing them faster than the private sector are today. We talked about that a little bit, if you have some questions about that. But that approach, you know, Paula and Kendra's helped to modernize those titles were very important to get into that comp phase. Because if you're not comparing apples to apples, you're really not aligning and getting good data back. And that's where we felt like we were challenged in the last couple of times we've done that. So again, so from a recruitment standpoint, the senior/junior roles, providing a clear path for the county to be able to understand that, yes, there is an opportunity for you to move up. You may not have to become a supervisor. Because as you look at the team that I've built over the last couple of years, you realize that the next person retires me. So how long are they gonna have to wait to be able to move up? Or someone has to leave the organization. And the last thing I want to be able to retain staff is them to have to look for someone to leave the staff. So that, I think that was the other part of that. So that's where the retention piece comes in for us. And then, and then there's folks that may not just have that leadership, you know, from a, don't want to be a manager, but they're very strong technically. Well, we want to be able to make sure that we can, you know, pay them adequately and keep them on the team, and providing that. So that's what, some of that you see there. And again, back to the providing a clear future path without having to have six different roles over the next 25 years. So from, as far as the title changes that you see here, we talked about moving from programmer analyst to developer, or in another role was a webmaster. Getting them very much more specific in those titles is going to help us retain staff and recruit staff. Sysadmins, we used to lump them into one big bucket, and everybody was a sysadmin. That was one of the roles that I had over the last 25 years, was to be a sysadmin. And what did that mean? Well, when there was only two of us, it didn't really matter. But now I have seven of those. And it makes, it's important to make sure that we, you know, narrow down on what those folks are doing and making sure that we're accounting for that. Technical specialist was an area that I felt like we were really failing because we have this mid-tier technician, but we were lumping four people into the same bucket, and they all did different things. So we were able to break out two of them as general, and then one for the network team, and one for the physical security team, and then be able to take that out to the comp study and comp them adequately. And then the other part of that, you'll see that there's four supervisors that we moved to more of a manager title. It just made more sense to be competitive in what we see in the current market. And so here's the progression piece. So we've created senior levels for the GIS analyst, the technical specialist, the physical security admin, the systems admin, the network engineer, and cybersecurity analyst. Junior areas, this is where the, it'll give us that flexibility to recruit someone or promote someone from within that may not meet that minimum criteria, but it gives them a work against, is I think is what we called it back in the day when I first came here. You could hire someone and give them that work against, and then you could give them the opportunity to move up. And again, just developing those tiers. I'm sorry, I ran through this pretty quick. If there's anything else that you wanted to add in to this, Paula?
No, it's important to understand that within the IT department, there's sub-families. And then those sub-families, you have software developers, you have infrastructure.
Yeah, so the network, yeah, I'm sorry, they would cut those.
And the network department. So that's why we changed some of the job titles to align with what they actually do, their capability and their technical skill set. So that was one of the big reasons we kind of did what we did. Instead of just calling everybody a systems admin, there's a network system admin. And then there's a, give me another department to ask.
The business.
The business system admin. And we were grouping them together, but they're two totally different positions, performing two totally different functions.
So you can kind of see our conclusion up on the screen there. Again, as Rodney said, we would not look to repeat with these areas unless, and this is always a caveat we put out there, unless we have a hot job, a job that we really are struggling to retain, or offers are being rejected. So other than that, we hope not to bring this group back. The estimated cost for this particular group was around $168,000. So again, that's an estimate as well. We realize, you know, both of these are costly projects, but they are part of the budget. So I believe we have the funding for that in this year's budget. So questions on the IT structure or their levels? We do use the levels in other departments. You've probably heard us with those senior and master titles. It's been successful, for sure, with the sheriff's office and allowing some growth, as well as EMS. So it's kind of modeled off of something we do in other areas. And there would be criteria, you know, ways for them to step up to that next level. But again, I think it gives us more options. And when Paula is doing postings, it gives her a broader range of recruitment. And sometimes we might find that we can't find somebody at the level Todd wants. So having that ability to hire in as a junior at a lower rate and spend a little time growing our own, I think will be a valuable strategy for us. So Rodney, I don't know if you want to.
I was just gonna echo what Lundie just said. So three or four years ago, with these market studies, we would have come to you with some level of confidence that it would stick for two years, maybe three. We don't have that confidence about any of this labor market any longer. And so the likelihood of us having to come back sooner than three years or four years for each of these departments as we go through, as we said, we just completed EMS six months ago.
If even, four months?
If even that, and we may be coming back to you with some recommendations around addressing their pay. So these are fluid situations and fluid times.
Questions or comments? I think that with what we have all experienced and read about and heard about in the labor market with a lot of organizations, we have been. market with a lot of organizations, we have been, on the county level, I think extremely fortunate. And I think having this level of responsibility and taking a look at these positions, the things that you've done is the reason, perhaps, that we have fared well. So, compliments on that. I think with the IT positions, I, I think most people, certainly I'll speak for myself, I think of everybody in IT are people that are down in the dark basement, working on laptops. And I can't get mine to scroll, by the way. But this, it's a lot, it's a lot more than that. And, and, you know, when, as we've had other conversations, you know, I don't think that most of us think about IT folks being responsible for communications devices in vehicles, sheriff's department vehicles, other things. So, I mean, this is a pretty diverse area that, that we don't always realize. So, yeah, good, good work.
Thank you.
Any other comments? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And we will move to item 4.11, Mount Pleasant Library Senior Center and Park Construction Delivery Method. And Kyle will be back with us for that one.
Good evening again. Wanted to discuss what the board's desire is for construction delivery method for the new complex in Mount Pleasant. So, obviously, we've got the library slash active living center, and then we have a good-sized sports amenity park. Obviously, it does have playgrounds, some minor trails, and restroom facilities. It is green space, so no utilities. And when we had discussed, probably way back when we started the project, I looked at some possibilities of, could we get the park component online prior to the build-out of the library and the active living center? And I might not have spoken directly with the board about that, but that was in my head is, is could I, could I make that happen? I think with the market and procurement, I don't think I'm going to have much luck. I don't, I don't think I'll beat it by that much. Meaning, if I get the park open, it might be a month or two before the rest of the building. I don't think there'll be that much of a gap. And my desire in that was, obviously, we're holding on to the fields on, on north, the fields that used to be combined with the middle school. We're holding those, and you know, that was one of the reason for creating this combination park and an entire facility was to replace those. And obviously, the faster I can do that, the better for the citizens that use them. But I don't, I don't think I'm going to be able to create a gap that's going to be large enough to drive that. I have worked with both the design teams, the engineers, and the architect, and they feel strongly that with today's market and going out for an early procurement, that construction manager at risk is the way to go with a project this size in terms of cost and scale. I would not use the word complex, because I look at what we're doing across the street as very, very complex. So, it's hard for me to say that it is the, the same type of project. But I can tell you that in procurement alone, and what we're going to have to get through pre-construction, and those packages, we're going to have to get approved first before the rest of the plans. It would be, my advice to the board would be to move forward with a construction manager at risk procurement method for this project.
Questions for Kyle?
I'd like the motion to suspend the rules of procedure. It should happen.
Okay, was that a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. To suspend the rules, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes.
Thank you.
So, at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the use of the construction manager at risk delivery method for the Mount Pleasant Library Senior Center and Park Complex. We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we move now to item 4.12 from Planning and Development, Soil and Water Conservation District Board Stream Flow Rehabilitation Assistance Program. And we welcome Kelly Siffer to talk about that item.
So, typically, we do come to you ahead of time to ask permission to do grants. In this case, we have a grant that, the cost share programs that we do at the Soil and Water, we do those, but the money does not flow through the county. And that was initially how this was presented, what, that we arranged that work. The state, we tell the state it's okay to pay for it, and they pay for it. So, the money never flows through the county. After we made the application and started working into it, they said, oh, yeah, that's going to flow through the county. So, I apologize for the backward approach to this, but we did believe that it was going to be outside the county funding. But it is going to flow through us. So, this is a request to approve that grant and the contract. This will be to do some stretches of stream cleanup in Irish Buffalo and Coldwater Creek for debris removal. We did apply for $400,000 initially. We have received $258,798. So, we did reduce the project down a little bit in length of area that we're going to work on. Those areas were selected based on the number of complaints we have received on those two particular areas. So, we went with those first, because we do receive complaints regularly on those areas. Are there questions?
And so, the actual work that you'll be doing is like removing debris and?
Removing log jams, yeah. So, what, what has happened, particularly with as much rain as we have had, large logs will go get caught somewhere down the stream, and then everything that comes along behind it gets caught too. So, it could be, you know, logs, you know, that kind of thing. It could actually be trash debris. I helped with the cleanup one time, and I pulled one of the kids' slides out of the creek. So, you just never know what's going to be there. But generally, it's going to be trees and branches and that kind of thing.
Which could create a flooding situation for folks.
It does. It creates flooding situations. So, this is a good opportunity for us to address a couple of things. Without any cost, there is no cost to the county. Just allowing the money to flow through us.
Kelly, I have just a quick question. I probably should know this by being the liaison on soil and water. But when you do these creekside cleanups like this, does that require us to get easement for the adjoining landowners? Or how, how does that work? Could you explain that?
So, this is a new program. They haven't done this in a long time. But basically, what we would be looking at is to get permission to access in certain areas and have the contractor be able to access those areas and pull debris out. And, and our bigger problem at this point is actually where to put the debris, because you have to make sure it gets all the way out of the floodplain. But we don't typically take it to the dump or anything like that. So, you're, you know, removing it and putting it somewhere. So, those will be things that we work out with, with the property owners. But they will be eager to have the opportunity to get those things removed.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up is item 4.13 from the Procurement Office Uniform Guidance for Federal Procurement. And I've got Tom Nun down, but I'm.
I don't see Tom, so I'll pretend to be him for a second. So, for all of our federal grants and federal dollars, they set a micro purchasing threshold that goes from $10,000 to as much as $50,000 if this board adopts an annual resolution. And so, this resolution, you approved one last year, would do the same thing, which is to move that micro purchasing threshold to $30,000, which aligns with our state procurement rules and regulations.
Any questions on that one? Okay, we move to 4.14, Register of Deeds Office Refund of Excise Tax. And I'm not sure if, if that requires any discussion at all. It's pretty well explained, but somebody overpaid their fees by $10, and they're requesting a refund. Anything else on that, Mr. Attorney?
Well, not really. But from what's in the agenda item, they've done what they're supposed to do by recording the affidavit of error. So, that's what you have to do. And then they're entitled to it.
Great.
Okay.
I will add briefly, the General Assembly passed legislation a few months, weeks ago that will allow you to pass a resolution that makes it so you don't, the commissioners don't have to vote on every single excise tax refund like you do right now. So, I'm hoping this will be the last $10 refund request that has to come in front of you.
Yeah, okay.
Good.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. If there are no further questions on that one, we'll move to item 4.15. And, and I will step outside the box and say we saved the best for last, because Aaron Rankin has waited very patiently to be the last item on the agenda. Welcome.
We don't mind being, bringing good news to end, to end the session. But thank you all for having me here, and thank you for supporting Bike Safe once again. Just wanted to go over, so this is a program that we're in our seventh year of running. This is a continuation grant of a grant that we've had each year. The money, again, just flows through the county. It's 100% reimbursement. We use it, the monies that are given for this is we manage nine counties. So, because of the work that this county has done with the Bike Safe program, for those of you who are not real familiar with it, it is a free motorcycle safety class that's offered through the sheriff's office. There are 46 agencies in the state that offer this program. So, anywhere you live in the state, you can probably go and spend a Saturday, Friday or Saturday with a local police agency and actually have an on-road evaluation of how you operate your motorcycle. We're the only class in the state that offers that for free. So, it's a great opportunity to meet your local officers. It's a great opportunity for us to meet our citizens and encourage motorcycle safety. So, and just, I just wanted to share with you real quick, just kind of how it's impacted our own county. So, in the seven years that we've been in operation of offering this class, we have had 237 students come through. We've offered 65 classes. And our agency has 10 assessors. We're one of the largest agencies in the state for that number of assessors, slightly outdone by the Highway Patrol, who has 11, but they cover the entire state. So, it's pretty good that we can offer that right here. And again, we are covering nine counties, and we were selected by the Governor's Highway Safety Program to manage those counties because of the work that we've done from the support of, of the commissioners and the sheriff for allowing this to happen. And how does this come back to us as well? We don't charge the citizen to take the class, but each citizen that takes the class, we earn credits through the Governor's Highway Safety Program that at the end of the year, we can turn those credits in for equipment. And that's equipment we don't have to put into the budget, we don't have to ask for. It's just as a repayment per se of offering this class and encouraging safe motorcycle operation. So, anything, it could be anything from printers in our cars to the thermal paper that goes in it to a radar unit. But those are the type of things that we get for offering the class. So, it's, it's very beneficial all the way around. So, this is, again, just a continuation ask of the grant. Again, it is our seventh year. It is a $5,000 grant. And we use that for, there's an annual conference that we go to to keep everybody up to date. So, that covers those fees. It's, it's just a very small grant, but it does a lot of work outside of that.
Questions or comments? Well, thank you. We, I think that's quite, quite a proud moment for Cabarrus County that, that our sheriff's office is administering this for, for nine other counties. And that, that certainly is not by accident, I'm sure. So, thank you for the, for the good work.
Yes, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And thank you for your patience as well.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yes. Okay. I think that concludes our agenda, and we now move to the approval of the regular meeting agenda. I think we acted on one item, which was F7, that we will need to remove from the agenda. Does anyone else see any other needed changes or corrections? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the regular meeting agenda with the elimination of item F7. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we do not have need of a closed session tonight. So, at this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. We stand adjourned, and we thank everyone for joining us tonight, both in person and by television.